We're on. I'd like to call to part of the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Oversight Board of the successor agency to the ACIA and the Housing Authority.
And the hospital.
And the hospital.
We have three closed sessions with a conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation to cases, conference with labor negotiators with five groups that set forth in the agenda notice, and then the one matter employee, public employee dismissal, discipline release.
And we'll be holding that until 5:00 coming back for the regular meeting, and anything we haven't finished up we'll do at the end of the meeting. You have an hour.
Yes, on item number one, the council unanimously authorized the city attorney to initiate actions against Island Enterprises pursuant to its lease for non-payment of rent.
And if we would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, we need the roll call first. Oh, no, look at me, I'm ahead of myself. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would just like to read a little something in light of the holiday. May the quiet of winter help us all to reflect on the blessings of the past year and our hopes and dreams for the future. During the past year, we have seen our families, friends, and ourselves grow a year older. May we learn to embrace our changes as we look to our future. May the magic of the season touch our hearts as we reach out to those with greater needs than our own. It is a privilege for all of the City Council to work with you and for you, the employees, residents, and visitors of our beautiful island. We wish you and yours a bountiful and happy new year and a merry Christmas. Okay, now we'll have the roll call.
Councilmember Albers, here. Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. And I believe we have a presentation. Southern California Edison will provide an update on DWR funding and on the Thompson Reservoir level.
Yes, good evening. No presentation, but some verbal notes that I'll be expressing here. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, for the opportunity to be here again. We have two topics, two updates since our last presentation a couple weeks ago. First, the Middle Ranch Reservoir level. Since our last water update on December 4th, we received measurable rain, and as a result, we assessed the following changes in the reservoir. Prior to the rain event on December 3rd, the reservoir measured 523.88 acre feet. After the rain event on December 10th, the reservoir measured 540.8 acre feet, an increase in 16.92 acre feet. As a result, the forecasts for stage two change from June 2020 to July 2020. The reservoir forecast continues to factor a 2013 to 14 basis for reservoir drawdown and desalination production, which assumes no positive recharge. And in response to Councilmember Albers' recommendation last meeting, we will continue to assess the actual system conditions over the next several weeks and update the forecast constraints appropriately.
Comments on that one or questions on that first part? Are we good?
That's good.
Okay, great news.
Next update in response to DWR Department of Water Resources Prop One Desal Grant Program. Since our last water update on December 4th, we received informal communication by DWR staff overseeing the desal grant program. These calls came from the program manager, Rich Mills, and deputy director, Chris Jurnell, and the following updates were provided. DWR acknowledged that they would like to see this program executed faster, smoother, and be a better experience for all involved in recognition of the delays and extensions that have occurred. The DDWR conveyed that the local assembly member has made it very clear how important this project is and that he is very anxious to see progress by DWR staff with respect to the Catalina proposals. So it is important to thank and recognize Assemblymember O'Donnell, his office, and those that have communicated the importance of this program and these projects to his office, including the Avalon community. DWR has plotted out their workload over the next several months and has early to mid-January reserved for completing the Catalina Desal Project Review and preparing their award decision within the first quarter of 2019. DWR expressed that there is adequate funding available within the program if deemed that all submitted projects, including SCEs under the Continuous Application Process, are deemed eligible and competitive for state funding. SCE expressed that we believe the Catalina proposals are eligible and competitive for state funding, especially as a result of addressing the comments made in the initial applications, although have not received any information from DWR to reaffirm this, which adds to the angst of not receiving any responses in the past. DWR responded that they have experienced providing conditional awards and going through multiple iterations with an applicant to fill in gaps between application review, decision to award, and contract issuance, provided it is not a full proposal replacement. Additionally, they have also experienced conditions of payments being made to further allow applicants to fill certain gaps when warranted. DWR provided a preliminary indication that the Avalon disadvantaged community or DAP condition can meet their criteria based on the information provided in the proposal or potentially require some additional future reinforcing tasks as a condition of They provided an update on the program balance budget of 40.7 million. They identified funds are awarded on a first-ready, first-serve basis to eligible applicants that pass a review process until all grant funds are exhausted. They identified eight applications have been received through the Continuous Application Process, and of the eight, three applications are still under review. Of these three applications, two are the Catalina Desal Enhancements Phase One and the Plant Two Retroactive Proposal. Of the other five applications that DWR completed their review, one was determined ineligible, and four were recommended to receive funding totaling approximately 1.3 million. It was three feasibility study-level projects and one construction project. The adjusted program balance in light of these recommendations of award is 39.4 million. The Catalina proposals seek a total of 13.61 million combined through this program and in order to maximize the benefit to the community. That summarizes the formal update shared, and I thank you for the time and opportunity to present on short notice.
Thank you. And again, it was the pipeline to be retrofitted, it was your deep-water wells, and there was one other, I believe. Oh, it was payback, huh?
Payback group.
Payback for the desal.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, Albers.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I did have one quick question, Luke. Has Edison continued to work on the engineering for those projects, or do we have a percentage completion?
I don't have that update today. I could check in with the project manager running it, but do know that both permitting and engineering continue.
Okay.
In parallel with the grant review.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there?
Thank you, Assemblyman O'Donnell.
Yes.
Sophie Kwong is Chief of Staff. They've really been working the political end for us and sometimes squeaky wheel.
Okay, announcements or written communications?
I have an important announcement for the public that on Christmas Day and New Year's Day, which is a normal trash pickup, Avalon Environmental is giving their crew the day off, which has never happened, and it is part of their contract that they can, and they've always serviced the community, so they are taking it off. And if so, if your pickup was on a Tuesday, they'll just do it on Wednesday and they'll get caught up. So, I'm glad that they get the holiday off.
Yes.
And I wanted to make sure that the public knows that there will be no City Council meeting on Tuesday, January 1st because of New Year's, and that City Hall is closed on December 24th and 25th, which is next Monday and Tuesday and January 1st.
So the next meeting will be on January 15th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, department head reports.
Mine's gonna be short. So, we had our first sea level rise workshop last week. We actually had three of them, as you'll recall. We, out of the three sessions, we had a total of eight people participate, so we're reconsidering the need to have three sessions, and we might condense it down to two next time, but we did get some good feedback from those people that participated. So, thank you to those folks who came out. The Zangray is progressing quickly and on the new north and west building. The progress on the renovation of the Pueblo is going a little bit slower. They are pushing forward on the new west building because it has the most concrete in the foundation, and I think they're wanting to get all their concrete done before Jordal has to shift his attentions up to the Marines at the airport. Vons is making great progress at the, on the remaining sidewalk and parking lot improvements. Tony Smith hopes to provide me with a fairly firm opening date by the early next weeks, but we're still looking probably middle of January. Tonight, John Gilbert and Mac will be conducting a lighting test to confirm that the amount of light coming from the windows complies with their conditions of approval. The conservancy is close to requesting their temporary COO. We are working to resolve a few final issues with the use of their spaces and so that we can get them at least a conditional certificate of occupancy. And last but not least, the atwater is going smoothly. They are still aiming for a pre-summer 2019 opening. So, any questions for me?
I have a question for Amanda. I, we've received several emails regarding the conditions of approval on the Vons project, and I know that you have given us information over and over again, so I've kind of looked at that, but there still is this outstanding question about the carts. And I know that you came back at just a prior meeting and explained that they would have a pickup service and whatnot, but the question is still out there that the agreement that was made was that the carts would be contained in their location.
What agreement?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I watched the, I watched the meeting of 2015, and Bratton stood up there and said, yes, he understands, and that's how it would be resolved.
Right. But, and I've talked to the city attorney about this, and in the resolution and the conditions of approval that was adopted by the council, the containment was not in there.
I don't know. It seems as, well, you go ahead.
So, I'm not sure how to resolve that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just being asked out there, and I don't have the answer, so I was just trying to make the question out, just put the question out there so that we could talk about it, because I don't know. I don't know.
It was a, it was a verbal promise that they made, but it was not made a condition of approval by the council.
So, how, it seems like we kind of, at what level we drop the ball?
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, I couldn't talk about it now. I guess I seemed to be able to talk about it. I couldn't talk about it then, I seem to be able to talk about it now because whether my property values are up or down.
No, no, no. This is, I don't want council to, that's the report, and if the council wants more detail on this, we have to put her on the agenda.
Okay.
Because we still have the conflicts because it's still with the conditions of approval for that project. But, what I can briefly say-
But however, okay, you're telling us we can't talk, we seem to be pussyfooting around these things for months, and they're gonna open on January 30. They're gonna be opening on January 30. And the conditions of approval, I don't think the community is hearing that they're being met or they're not. For example, there was a lot of discussion on solar, but I guess that never got in there that they were gonna put in solar. I don't know what happened there.
Look at me, that was the City Council.
Huh?
The City Council blessed the final conditions.
No, and they talked about, well, I wasn't voting on it, but that was there, but it didn't turn out into the agreement. I don't know. It doesn't, it's not on the roof. I'm not arguing with you, but it's not on their roof anywhere.
I think what happens, Annie-
No, please, excuse me. No, Annie.
Is that, a lot of times, sometimes when you have a project that is as controversial as Vons was, there's a lot of different issues that get discussed, back and forth and back and forth. And sometimes, things don't make it into the final motions, the final conditions of approval, and, and the recollection may be different from what was actually said when the motion was made. And so, as far as the carts, I too went back and watched the video, and there was a lot of conversation back and forth about, initially, we said that the planning commission, we thought the planning commission said, no, we're gonna allow them to pick them up, and then at the very end, they said, no, actually, the planning commission came around and said we thought we would do the containment, and then it's just, it went back and forth a lot. And so, unfortunately, it didn't make it into the final adopted condition.
The conditions of approval were brought back to the council at a meeting after all the discussions for the council to review the commission, those conditions of approval to make certain that all the actual agreements, not the discussions, but all the actual agreements and conditions imposed by the council were in the conditions of approval, and those conditions of approval were approved by the council.
So, this- Okay. So, that's, that really was the answer that I was looking for.
Right. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that why can't we bring it back on the 15th with the real conditions so we can look at it?
The planning commission, no, the planning commission has, is the only one that can amend the conditions of approval, and it has to amend them with facts that have subsequently changed.
The planning commission?
Yes.
But they kicked it up to the City Council. They didn't even hear it.
An appeal.
Why did we vote on that?
Because there was an appeal to the City Council. But the conditions of approval, if they're to be modified, go back to the planning commission, subject to an appeal to the City Council.
And I don't, Richard, are you just asking to take a look at what those conditions were?
Yes.
Then, since we're on it just right quick, the CR, the redemption thing, again, and I'm asking for a waiver. We discussed this at the last council meeting, and what did we say? That we want, did we want to write a letter to Vons or something to it? Did we just talk about it and then once again not do anything?
No, there was a direction to, to talk with Vons about it, and there's been emails going back and forth between the city manager and Vons.
Amanda had reached out, and I believe it was in the summer, coming summer. They can't apply for that redemption until then, is that correct?
Right.
And at that time, we can voice our-
Because it wasn't a condition. We didn't put that in the conditions either.
Actually, there were, I don't have the conditions.
I think the recollection was, they are obligated to do recycling required by the state, but the state allows them to request an exemption, and they have to pay so much a month for that exemption. They currently have an exemption at the existing store.
Right.
Cal Recycle only issues these exemptions twice a year, and they can't apply for the exemption until the store is open.
Okay.
So, they, Cal Recycle does not anticipate taking actions or considering the exemption until July 2019.
Okay.
And I think, I believe our direction from the council was, at that time, we would stay on top of it and we would step in and voice our concerns that perhaps they should not be granted the exemption.
Because then they're gonna come and say they don't have room to quit anything.
There was also one other condition that I thought, I should probably look it up and find out, better, get better information. And about where they back in their trailers and their trucks, all that was supposed to be soundproofed, included, enclosed.
Yes.
But I was down there looking at it now, and on the part on Catalina Street, it's open, there's no window, there's no nothing, so that's not enclosed and soundproofed to me? I don't know if that was part of the conditions. I would sure like to look into that. This is kind of the stuff that's been brought up.
Right.
So, that was part of the condition, to be enclosed and soundproofed, unless they come up with some miracle thing to do that.
So, I talked to Mac and that they need to, they need to figure out how to enclose those windows, but they also have to allow for ventilation in the loading dock because you have a truck sitting in there running.
I get it.
Then they, but they have ordered acoustical panels that will be installed inside the loading dock that's supposed to be like soundproofing. I can confirm whether those panels have been installed. I don't know. They are installed. Thank you, Bob.
But the opening's still up on top.
But the open windows.
Are still up there.
Right.
Okay, and then while we're on it, there's one other thing. And I really appreciate that people from the community, some people may say they think they're kind of a pain, but I appreciate the fact that people in the community are still wanting to be, are still involved.
Sure.
And, because we, some things, and I know you get the same information that we're getting out there, but the road on Catalina, the condition in which the road is-
On the intersection.
No, on, like in front of the Alternator Inn and where they put all the electrical in and all of that.
Right. My understanding from Mr. Greenlaw is wherever they cut into the street, they're gonna have to repair that up to our standards. I think the conversations during the rain was, as we know, that Catalina Beacon intersection has always been a lake when we get heavy rains, and I believe the goal is that during the Vons repair, and Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, during the Vons repair of the damage they did to the intersection, we're hoping to also correct the puddling effect that has always occurred there anyway. It's a drainage directional thing.
So, there's a big cut, like with a razor, about two or three feet from the gutter? What is that?
You mean where they've already cut the asphalt?
It's running up Catalina and it's, you know, to the, that side of the Vons story. What is, what is that?
Are you talking where the white paint line is right now, or do you-
Well, there's a, there's a cut. There's a, an actual saw cut?
Saw cut, and so that's to put in the new curb and gutter and sidewalk. So, that gets all new frontage improvements.
So, that means our street's gonna be more narrow?
No. No, it, the location of the face of the curb is in the exact same spot, but it is 30, 40 years old. With this project, we had the, you know, option to be able to put brand-new in and get a whole new service life out of that concrete.
Okay, so to do that, you-
Instead of patchwork, it's like, nope, the project required all new frontage improvements.
Perfect.
When they get done, just like any project, just like the Trailhead, there's significant paving to be done, but hot mix is not on the island, and it may need where, again, they patch it up as, up to something that's acceptable, and then they give us money to us, for us to pave with our next paving project.
Okay.
Unless there, we can combine a couple projects and move a paving contractor in, which would be desirable.
Yeah.
But it depends on the time of year and, and so, we-
So, that truck route, from that point on, from Beacon to Catalina, Sumner, that's all just gonna be patchwork, it's not gonna be paved. So, Catalina to Sumner.
They will put our roads back in order up to our standards.
But it's not paved, they're not gonna pave it.
It's not paved from lip to lip of gutter.
So, that's just a patch.
That was not required with the-
No, I understand that, but my question is, they're not paving the road, they're just patching it, right?
And where you see those cuts, we'll probably go out and re-cut further out and put a more substantial paved section in. Right now, they cut enough to be able to get the curb and gutter in and still have the traffic, but when we get hot mix here, we can prep it better.
Now, are we doing that, or we get in a contractor to do that? Is the city workers doing that?
We can do either one.
Yeah, but I was just asking.
It's not the city crews, it would be a contractor, a hot mix contractor, just like we did before.
Okay.
And hopefully, we can mix that with some that we would like to do and get a contractor, maybe if they give us dollars to reimburse through the fees, then we can do the work and we can just add it to our contract.
Okay.
As we get to it, okay?
Okay, but, okay, so, since, just one more thing. Then it was brought to my attention, what about when the Vons trucks turns up on Catalina, that is not the truck route? And those are gonna be loaded trucks, going, pulling onto that street and then backing in. Is there, is there potential of a problem with?
And so, next meeting, I'll actually bring that topic to you with a full agenda item. So, I've broken into pieces. First, the parking, then the intersection of Sumner and Beacon, and then the Catalina and the truck backing, so that we can understand each of those pieces and take time to understand those, so.
We're concerned, okay, load is the concern.
And I will bring you proof by cores of the asphalt of what we have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Again, I just had a question, because my understanding is that there was gonna be a test to see whether in fact that was feasible? Has that happened with the long truck?
That'll be part of the agenda item. Last week, I met with Avalon Freight Service. We're setting up for tomorrow, we're actually gonna do the physical tests with the trucks and video it, and I'll bring that in and show you it with, you know, so all that, it takes time to set all that up.
I get it. Okay, just-
With flagmen, I'm sure, right?
Check in my memory.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was a short one, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. But, you know, it's kind of a shame that we were not getting the televised portion of this meeting in a lot of the town, because if everybody was able to get it, then we probably wouldn't be getting as many questions on the street, but it's, but it's really nice that, to have it explained, so, and then that people can watch the meeting after.
Good evening, council. After last meeting, obviously, everybody knows we had a great deal of rain. We almost got close to four inches at the harbor. So, our guys throughout the first couple of nights spent time pumping a lot of skiffs, pumping a lot of boats, we ended up saving a boat, and they did a great job. And it, we get paid to be out there when it's rainy and cold, and these guys, you know, did a heck of a job, so, my hat's off to them, and we're moving along with our maintenance projects. And if there's any questions, I'll take them. If not, I'll-
You saved a boat? You guys saved a boat during the rain?
A boat, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Has there been, what sort of state has the wash-down docks and the pump-a-head docks? Have those had any troubles over the last year, not functioning or?
No, I mean, we do run into some problems where the people will pump out stuff, they're not pumping, and they'll tie up the pumps, and so, we have to pump out the tank and clean them all out, but the water's work, the suction's working. That's part of that grant program that we just found out that we should have our paperwork by February on that. I just talked to Lisa Hernandez up at Department of Waterways, so that whole system's gonna be redone and fixed up.
Okay, and what about the floats themselves? Have they been in good working order?
Yeah.
Or, do you ever pull those floats out?
No, we pulled them out because of storm. We haven't pulled them out of the water to maintain them. We'll be building new floats to put in there, so those floats will come out. It's just we're trying to get the most bang for our buck and still, still keep them in because our contractor that pumps heads is not in the water this winter, so, but I have not heard any complaints that they're not working. We can tell from our office by a light up on, above the rescue dock, when it's flashing, that pretty much tells us there's a pump issue. So, we get ahold of our crew and they come down and, and take care of it, but other than the everyday maintenance of hoses rubbing on rocks, we gotta replace them once in a while, short of that.
Great.
Any else?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, three items to report. Last storm, we had some major precipitation, and as JJ said, during Thursday 12 of 8 event, we also had a major failure of our 10-inch saltwater transmission line from Mount Aida Reservoir to Catherine Booster Station. This release resulted in erosion of the hillside between lower and middle terrace and placed mud into the roadway on Pelly Beach Road at the Trailhead. Two businesses took on water and one ended up with electrical fire the next day because of a short. Public Works crew responded with a coordinated force, cleaning the intersection, protecting the businesses, and repairing the saltwater line by the end of the day. The break revealed that the valve at the reservoir is not functioning, and we are scheduled to replace it in January. So, we had to drain the reservoir 100,000 gallons to make that repair. South Beach seawall, rock is prepped and ready to be placed. You see it on the beach out there, and we'll place it this week, and that'll provide winterized to, wintertime protection from surges. It's strictly a temporary basis as we move forward in designing the fix and getting that accomplished here real quick. Major work is underway, as Amanda said, in the public right-of-way for Vons, and that's taking a lot of my time and Public Works time. The Trailhead and Zangray-
works time. The Trailhead and Zane Gray, the sewer, so those are all projects that are in the public right of way, which is Public Works' responsibility to inspect and make sure that they're built to our standards. Any questions?
Yes, and I, I really, really want to try to keep this as fair as possible, but our community and the council was promised garbage cans by October.
That's true.
And I know that you've had so many emergencies and other things going on, but we have been kicking around, as Richard would say, kicking around, kicking the can around for four years on trash cans, long before you were even here, Bob. But it's coming to a critical point where, you know, we need to get some trash cans.
Okay, so Jordan Monroe's been working on that project for us, and asking him what the status was. He was saying that there has to be an analysis that goes back. They accepted our purchase as far as our procurement method, and they approved that, but they said, "And you need to submit this before you do procure it." And that's how much that we're diverting via recycle, and Jordan is working on that to get that done. We don't meet those requirements. These are grants. They're state grants. They're reimbursement. I wouldn't expect that we want to pay all of that ourselves, so we don't want to misstep. Sorry that it hasn't happened yet, but that's the reality of what happens when we think that we're going to be there and we know the steps, and I get told those steps and I present that to you. But then the reality is that we may not get the full story, and then we get our schedule back. But we're not far away.
Is that a calculation that we did when we applied for the grant?
I would have, you know, I don't have all those details, and I would have to ask Jordan to give you a correct response. Otherwise, I'm just assuming, you know, what pieces that we still need.
Okay.
But that was, at least I knew that I would get a question. I asked where we're at. I'm pushing very hard with staff, and if you ask staff, you know, I'm, I'm on their butt at this point to say that, hey, we need to get this done, and I know that you're very interested. So, it's not something that we're putting down like I call my column C. It's a column A. It is great value to the community. So, anything that reduces our risk or provides great value to our community, then those things get pushed up to the top.
I think that's really what I wanted to just hear specifically from you and not me saying it out there, is that it hasn't left the forefront of your mind. It's still a work in process, and this is the issues that you're faced with. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the Acorn lifts, we're-
So, we still haven't made any additional progress.
Not the Acorn lifts, because they backed, we haven't made any progress.
We haven't made any additional progress, because the last time I said that the president of the company and I were going to have a conversation, I did not get that phone call from him. And when I've tried to call there, I don't get a response.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Sorry that we're in that situation.
And wasn't Plan B then, that we were just going to get CDBG to deliver it ourselves?
So, then I asked the Acorn, when I did have the discussion with the staff members that put the grant together, hey, I would just like to buy this equipment myself.
Right.
They say they do not sell that unless one of their own company installs it. They do not sell it to somebody like us to install it, because I know that I myself personally, I could direct and be there to make sure that installation was done. It doesn't seem too difficult.
But they're not the only manufacturer of it.
They're not the only manufacturer, but again, we have state grant funds. They even have a federal handle on them, and they have steps that we need to follow.
Right.
And otherwise, you get all the way to the end of the project, and they say, "You didn't do the correct steps, and we're not reimbursing you."
I understand. It's just fair.
If it was our city-owned funds, we'd already be there.
I know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Baker, speaking on behalf of the Finance Department, wanted to start by saying that this week, we responded to an information request, and as a result of that information request, we identified errors in our State Controller's Office Compensation Report that we submitted for calendar year 2017. So, just as background, every year, we report on a calendar basis, the compensation received by city employees. This report was sent back in early May to the Controller's Office, and in reviewing it in response to this information request, we identified errors where all employees' compensation was understated for the regular pay column. The Finance Department is working to correct this issue, and we hope to have a revision sent back to the State Controller's Office before the end of this year. We submitted to the information request the correct amount, so now we're working to correct what was previously submitted to the state. For, last week, we sent out business license renewals as well as notices regarding the numbered receipts. And this week, we will be sending out reminders for dog license renewals. We also plan to publish that on the sign in Vons as well as put an ad in the paper just to remind people if they have a dog to come to City Hall and get a license for.
Could you, could you include bicycle licenses in that?
We could do a separate one for bicycle licenses.
Oh, okay.
The next thing, during my review of the CAFR, I had some questions regarding some of the figures we had in our 17 numbers for the Housing Authority. So, right now, I'm working with RSG and Davis Farr, trying to reconcile differences between what we have in our CAFR and what we had previously submitted in our annual housing reports. So, I've been working closely with Davis Farr to try to get those questions answered, so we can finalize the audit. Right now, the draft of the MDNA is with Bob Torres being reviewed. And like I said, once we can resolve this one issue with the Housing Authority and send the draft to MDNA, it's about a week is what Davis Farr has said as far as turnaround time, given the holidays. I'm anticipating it might be more like two weeks, but we hope to wrap that up shortly. And then lastly, just a couple of warrants I wanted to call out. And again, if there's additional ones, we can speak to, and we get to that in the section. But we have warrant with Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, and what that related to was lodging for emergency seawall repair. It was noted that we don't often have a lot of expenditures or warrants going out to them, but that is the reason for that warrant. As well as for Michael Baker International, it was brought to my attention, given the dollar amount of about approximately $21,000. That was related to engineering and planning related to the Cabrio Mole. We have been submitting to MTA for reimbursement for that engineering. That is what that warrant related to. And lastly, it was brought to my attention that there were some duplicate amounts and duplicate payees on the US Bank credit card detail. The two boating and waterways for $40 related to training provided to two different harbor employees. And then the LA County Fire, not duplicate payments, but duplicate amounts related to permits assessed at two different city locations. So-
Thank you for listening to our data.
Unless there's anything else from Finance, that's what I have.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Matt, when is the SB 341 filed? Is that an annual or?
That is an annual report, and it's due December 31st. I believe historically, we have submitted it and then brought it to Council in January, and I believe that's the plan this year as well. But it's an annual report, is my understanding.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more?
We've got Community Services in the audience. Anybody, you have nothing to add? No, thank you. Yeah, other than, once again, the community looks great. It looks cheering and bright, and we are ready for Christmas. So, thank you for all those, that hard work. Okay, City Manager Report.
I have nothing to report.
City Attorney Report.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Reports.
I understand I missed a really good Christmas party.
You did.
So sorry.
No, it was great. Sorry you were sick.
Yeah, I was going to start with that, just to thank staff for putting together a nice party. I think everyone had a really wonderful time. It's a great team-building opportunity and just a chance to relax. But no, I did not make it to the chi. I also wanted to recognize two community members who've been working with Julie Lee, the Executive Director at the Museum, Paula Patterson and Lindsay Mattingly, have put together a program where our students from Avalon Schools are going for a program to look at the current exhibit about Sugarloaf, which if you haven't been, plein air paintings from that period. It's a fantastic show. And then they're also going through the bird park. So, I just wanted to commend those community members for helping our students to learn about our island's history. And I received a very nice thank you from our Special Olympics on behalf of the tennis club that provided equipment so that the Special Olympics kids could enjoy that sport.
Awesome, great.
Very nice.
Oh, I love the, did we ever, Denise, did we ever look into the other extra traffic with bicycles being added to our traffic thing from-
Oh, the hotels?
From the hotels. There's two different hotels that have them, and-
So, if they are-
The impact on the city, or what they have to do to get permission to do that?
The two hotels, and Scott, I believe, misunderstood your question, if they had to have a special permit. He replied, yes, it was a transportation permit. That is only for motorized bicycles. Regular bicycles, we do not have any kind of regulations that can stop them.
So, electric bikes, not motorized then?
No, any electric, any bike that has any type of electric bikes, and we've done in the past, they have to come and get a transportation permit for them. But if they're just 100% human-pedaled bike, they don't.
But they should have a bike license.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Which is a one-time thing, Mayor Marshall, so it's not an annual thing. So, if you register it once, it's just a one-time deal.
Oh, okay.
And that just helps if you lose it, that we would have the tag number.
So, until we figure out what the impact will be on the city somewhere along the line, when somebody else wants to get more bikes, I guess that'll be an issue then, other than electric. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all, and everybody have a great holiday.
Thank you for asking, Richard. I should have reported to you. Again, a shout-out to city staff for a fantastic holiday party, full of cheer and really great food. And I don't have anything to report, other than I would like to just say I had the opportunity today to spend some time at Avalon Schools, speaking in Mr. Ross's government class today. And I was extremely impressed that through this first semester, they've created a House of Representatives, a Senate, and the students have actually passed bills amongst their organizations, and they have some really great ideas, and they're extremely excited about the learning process and procedures. So, we talked a lot about what their bills were, and then also just opened up the floor for questions about what's happening in Avalon. And it was, it was very, very beneficial for me to hear from our youth, the things that they're thinking about, the questions they have. What is the debt of the city? What is, how can we go out for a bond? Questions that you would not think that our students in high school would be thinking about. So, I was very blessed to have that opportunity today, and thank you, Mr. Ross, for inviting me.
And last week, I met with trustee Doug Otto from Long Beach City Council, Long Beach, Long Beach City College. Three of their counselors came over and two of their PR person and their chief of staff. And we went up to the school. They taught the kids all about Long Beach City College. They did an inventory needs assessment, which I also participated in. It was quite fun. But then we spent, I spent the day with them. The kids, I don't know exactly how many at the end of the day will end up going, but we're going to have at least 10 kids that will be going to Long Beach City College, taking advantage of the college promise that pays for their first two years of college. And if they keep decent grades, they automatically get into Long Beach State, which is tough to get in. They have tens of thousands of applicants. So, for our kids to be able to have that step in, it's really wonderful. So, we have a good relation with, relationship with them, and we hope to keep that going. Okay, yes, Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening. Mark Malan, 131, Metropole. When you talk about carts, it's not a Vons problem. It's a neighborhood problem. Now, Vons has not taken these carts and redistributing them through our city. These are being done by the residents. Vons tried previously to put the magnetic tape in the road. That system does not work. I'm here to tell you, it never worked. It's a terrible system. I came before you, and other faces were sitting in your chairs, and I said at that time, "They have a perfect system at the airport. You put a quarter or two in, you get the cart, and you put the cart back, you get your quarter or two." Now, some people are going to use those carts, especially now that Vons is going to be in a much more superior location in proximity to more homes. So, there'll be less carts perhaps going to the store, more, less golf carts going to the store, even though now we've got parking. If you installed, if you had Vons install the same system that they have at the airport, there are hundreds of kids on this island that would return the carts for free to get the quarter or two out of the machine. We may have seen the movie where someone exists, Tom Hanks existed on that. Okay, the bottom line is, I think I said it six years ago here. I'm here to say it again. Let the carts return themselves. Vons is not, Vons is not going to have the staff to get them, especially during the summer, especially when all the carts are flying everywhere, especially when there's not enough staff. Let the carts return themselves. They will. All you have to do is have the mechanism for the kids to get a quarter or two for every cart that comes back, and they will all come back every day automatically. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Any, oh.
Hello, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. I just wanted to say hello. The library is, I'm afraid, going to temporarily close for business. I can give that date out now, December 29th. We're working hard to have a temporary location open as soon as possible after that. We're going to have as many library services available, too. I know they are measuring the space for Wi-Fi, and I know we're going to have two public computers. So, that's certainly going to continue. We're going to have a small in-house collection. Most of the collection, I think people are going to need to order from their computers at home or at our stations there, and it'll come and be delivered. I'm going to have a Storytime rug, and I'm going to try and do Storytimes. I'm not absolutely sure how that's going to work. I may need to find a different space to do Storytimes. We will see. It's a storefront we're going to be moving into. I can't say where it is yet, even though I think everybody knows, but take a spin down Metropole and take a look, you know? It's going to be open pretty soon. Let's see. I just want to talk a couple of things about the events we're going to do in the last week or so while we're still in our wonderful space, which is going to come back in a few months, and it's going to be beautiful. I've seen the signs. We're going to have Make Your Own Holiday Snow Globes on Thursday. I've got 20 snow globes and glitter and water, and it's going to be kind of appalling, but it'll be wonderful. We've got the Make Mo Technology Team coming on the 26th, right after Christmas. They're going to be making LED geometric lanterns that folks can take home. That's going to be a lot of fun, too. That's at 3:30.
Is that for all ages? Can do that?
3:30 is for children. 5:30 is for everybody, and adults are extremely welcome to the 5:30. The 5:31 is meant to be a whole family, but everybody's welcome. It's actually meant to be adult, but the way this island works, you don't have a kid there, you got to have a kid there. But it's available for everybody. On the 27th, I'm going to have Make Your Own New Year's Eve masks, because I've got like a drawer full of paper masks. And then on the 28th, I, at my previous library, had a lot of success with this. I'm going to do an outer space talk about the Inside Rover. I'm a, I am a solar system ambassador, meaning I'm registered with NASA to do outreach and talk about science. So, I'm going to be doing a talk about that, see how it flies here on Avalon. And of course, our Storytimes continue as long as the library's open every Saturday at 10 o'clock. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. You've got a full agenda, a lot of work to do. Okay, is that it?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Mike Sheehan, 251 East Whitley. And I'm here tonight just to discuss this combined city clerk, city manager job again. And I did get some good information from the city clerk on salaries and a few other things, but there's three things here. I mean, number one, combining the city manager and city clerk's job. Number two, the fact that there were no postings for this combined position in 2017 and 2018. And then the compensation or pending compensation for this position, which at this point seems to be an unknown- to be an unknown. But just a baseline, the last two city managers we've had were, you know, combined pay and benefits package in the neighborhood of $200,000 a year. Those aren't exact, because I just took it from what I saw Ben Harvey's and interpolated what David Jenkins were. But, you know, just going with that, is there anybody here that feels that we had no one qualified on existing staff to become the city clerk in Avalon? Was there anybody to draw from? I mean, I know some pretty competent people on the staff, but I just like to throw that question out.
I don't think that's something we're going to become engaged in today.
Say again?
This is, that is not a discussion we're going to become engaged in.
Okay, but it is a fair question, because there's a lot of people asking that. Is there not anybody, was there nobody that could actually do that job? And that's, you know, not acceptable at this point, I'm sorry, you know? So nobody has that answer. But, no, I just have to be very direct here. You know, city manager compensation is a huge deal in the state of California right now. It's, it's getting run out of sight. You know, basically, city councils are giving into unbelievable salary, salary and benefits packages. And you know, what we have here now, okay, for example, are, on an annualized basis, $300,967 for the city clerk at this point, or the city manager combined city clerk. Okay, these, I receive, you know, these figures from the Freedom of Information Act I threw in last, or put in last week. But here we are, $300,967, plus we've got a city, assistant city manager coming on board, a range of 403,000, 174,000. It's $475,000. But, you know, the, the governor of the state of California combined pay and benefits is $278,000. You know, we're the fifth-largest economy in the world, and 40 million people. There is some pending legislation right now from Sabrina Cervantes from Riverside. She's in an area out there where I'm pretty familiar with the politics, and it's bilateral support. Republicans and Democrats are saying, we got to put a cap on this runaway city manager deal, and I think we need to address that. But I'd like to find out if there's any clerk that's capable of stepping forward.
Well, I believe you're going to be getting some more information, and Matt addressed that a little bit earlier, Mike, but go ahead if you want to say some more.
I just want to again apologize on behalf of finance. We did go back and forth with Mike on a couple of responses, but just to clarify, the $300,000 he was quoting, we had double-counted the deferred compensation with the regular pay. And again, I sent Mike an email this afternoon with the correct figure, that compensation for the city manager, I believe, is around $260,000 right now with benefits, retirement, and healthcare, et cetera.
All right, and that's, that's not open for discussion, that's done, and you have another item, we're not going to discuss it anymore.
The rule was correct, because the latest one here is annualized at $300,000. You're going to bid this for 11 months.
Okay, anyway. Okay. So, all righty. Well, we're going to move on to the consent calendar.
We have six items this evening on the regular consent calendar. One item on consent with the city council acting as a successor agency, and one item with the council acting as a successor agency and the housing authority. First one is minutes from, which is going to be corrected, it is only for the November 19 city council meeting. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $1,656,829.69. Number three is to adopt the ordinance amending Article 4 of Chapter 2 of Title 10 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding a temporary increase in cross-channel warfage. Number four is to adopt the ordinance repealing and replacing Article 2 of Chapter 2 of Title 6 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding solid waste collection. Number five is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Great Western Recreation in the amount of $42,500 for the replacement of surfacing material at Kid Park. Number six is to authorize the harbor master to renew the attached list of waterside permits for 2019, with the exception of those listed in the Recommended Actions 1 and 2, which have recommendations from the finance department for non-renewal unless they are brought into compliance regarding outstanding fees due. Number seven, which is just the successor agency item, and that is to adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving a recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 1920, and a successor agency administrative budget for fiscal year 1920. Number eight is the successor agency and the housing authority one, and that is to authorize the city manager, agency director, to enter into a contract with RSG Incorporated to provide successor agency and housing authority consulting services for fiscal year 1920, and a not-to-exceed amount of $35,000.
I'd like to pull items 7 and 8, please. Okay.
I think we're pulling item 6, too, aren't we? Waterside permits? Or no?
Did we need to?
Okay, no, if, if we don't need to, then, then we don't need to.
I don't think we do, because we took the action in the.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, Pam, what items were you?
7 and 8. Regarding the successor agency.
I'd like to pull 5.
Richard, do you want to pull 5?
5.
Okay.
6.
5, 7, and 8 we're going to pull?
Yep.
Okey-dokey. On the other items?
Move staff from 1 to 4 and 6.
I'll second.
Would the council like to make any comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number 5.
Is this the original, what we have out there? This is on the Kenapi Park, right?
This is across the street from Kids Park, yeah.
So what's the lifetime expectancy of those?
It's about a 10-year.
About a 10-year?
Yeah, it's about a 10-year, and it's long pass, it's due.
Right, yeah, I've seen it over there.
Yeah, it's, it's splitting in different places. There's an impact test that it would not meet if it went through it, so the recommendation is we've got grant funding to replace it, so we do that at this time.
So that's it, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure, so it's similar to the stuff we have over here?
It would be the same material we put in, put in there, as well as some other improvements just to the playground itself.
Right.
Is that all I need to ask, the life expectancy?
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll move approval then on number 5.
I'll second.
No further comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number 7, the ROPS.
Okay. I just, I, because we're making a big change that's going to have a significant impact for the next budget, not this, not 19, but for the following budget year, I thought it would be, was important to bring, make sure we're all focused on it, that, that city manager is focused on, and I know finance is focused on it, and that is that we are not going to be asking for the administrative expenses of $540,000 that we have been receiving up until this point going forward. So that is money that we have used to offset administrative costs from the city manager and various departments, that we're going to need to fill that gap next year. So I just think it's a significant change, it's a significant amount of money. Matt did point out, which is true, that we had last year budgeted some legal expenses, so maybe the wash, you know, the, we have one year where it's not as bad, but the bottom line is, it's a, it's a $500,000 hit. So I think that we just need to, to be focused on that. But I do think it is the right thing not to keep asking for that, because I think the county's not going to go for it anymore.
Okay, well, thank you for that good news.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So I'll move staff on number 7.
I'll second.
I'll put a vote?
All ayes.
Item number 8.
All right. So, number 8 has to do with an ongoing contract that we've had with RSG to help with various filings that we do. And I just wanted to have a better understanding of why the number doesn't seem to change, even though the reports, for instance, the last three years of this SB 341, which is a report that we have to file with the state regarding our expenditures of housing funds. Literally, you can hold the report up to the light, and the only thing that changed were a few of the expenses. So I'm wondering why it is that we're spending $10,000 for a report where finance is pulling together the finance information, and somebody says to him, which you can do when you go through the statute, it says exactly the information that has to be reported. So we're providing numbers that get put into a report that, for the most part, is boilerplate, and it's costing our housing funds, which I want to preserve, we all want to preserve and use as much as we can, to the extent to use for actual housing, not just filing reports or paying consultants. So I just, I'm pulling this item for the discussion, because I agree, we want staff to be aware of these things, that it is, I mean, I agree, there are things that consultants can help with, that we don't have the expertise, but sometimes it's important to say, okay, what is it that we're really getting for our dollar here, and what is it that the consultants really providing? And again, the same thing goes for the ROPS. We no longer have any other enforceable obligations. All we are doing is collecting bond money and turning it over, and the $250,000, which we hope we will still be able to get, there's a formula we're using that we provide to the county, so nothing's changing in terms of the reports that we do, which is not to say, obviously, we're dealing with a different successor agency, there may be changes, and things that we need help from a consultant with. I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to the bills, and what, what work was really done for that money, so.
Well, and then last year, I'm assuming the contract was $35,000 last year?
Mm-hmm.
And how much of that did we spend last year? Did they?
Almost all of it.
Pretty much all of it?
Yeah.
Last, last year?
If I could speak to that last year, this where, it's, from, with RSG, we did spend $50,000, but of that, approximately $17,000 was for a project looking into enhanced financing districts. And another, I want to say approximately $15,000 of that was related to a Whitley project, so that's separate from the housing or successor. So the delta of that would be approximately $28,000 would have been spent in fiscal year 18. And fiscal year 17, the amount was closer to $15,000. In discussions with RSG, part of the reason is, is I, I had, I and Bob had to reach out to RSG more in fiscal year 18 to get an understanding of some of the, the history behind the successor agency. And so that's why, if you do look at through the years, there is ebbs and flows, and when there's changes in turnover in finance. It has been a very valuable resource to me to have someone who's, who's been here essentially since the beginning, where we don't necessarily have that historical knowledge in the finance department. And so last year, I do think it was close to $30,000 for the housing agency successor, and I can pull the exact amount. And then there's the additional amount was related to those other projects.
For being such a, being so loyal to them, it seems like we get a little free training, right, along the way on how to fill out a form?
Mayor Marshall, we do have Tara Matthews in the audience this evening, and she does have a presentation, if you have some questions and you'd like her to go through it.
Oh, thank you, okay.
And this is also, just to note, that this is a not-to-exceed amount, so it doesn't mean that we're actually going to spend it, but it's a not-to-exceed amount. The big thing, you know, is that we have got a new oversight agency this year.
Okay.
It's the county, and so we don't know how that's going to look.
Well, since you're here, you want to say something?
And I, I just want to say, and on behalf of what Matt was saying, because he did send me the whole breakdown, I find it very interesting, and I'm sure it was necessary, of the expenditure of $16,000 to look at the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, because I remember, we talked about that, that was something that David Jenkins had wanted to do, but I don't recall the city council actually authorizing.
Yes, you did.
We did, okay. So I don't recall it, which is why I was asking it, but then I, Matt, my other question, and I'm sorry I didn't ask offline when we were talking, is the SA Admin Services, what was that for? Because that was $12,543.
So that would be related to the successor agency?
Okay, got it.
So I want to have questions regarding the ROPS, et cetera.
You just told me that, thank you.
Well, come out of it, yes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm going to apologize in advance, because I have a little bit of a raspy voice tonight, so it goes in and out, I'm sorry. So we have two separate proposals and contracts before you tonight, so I'll start, I had a presentation prepared for item 7 to walk you through our current ROPS and whatnot, but I'll just give you kind of a verbal update of what we do, and if you want to get some more details, I can expand on that. But as far as the successor agency is concerned, so you're absolutely right at this point, it's the ROPS form, and that's what you see before you in the admin budget, but there's a lot more that goes into it than just the filling out of the numbers and the preparing of all of the staff reports. So how it works is we work with finance, basically, to get all of your trial balance detail, and as Matt had mentioned, we go through and we help look at that information, and at times, we found things that maybe weren't recorded in the right place, or kind of asked those questions, so that you guys can move funds to the correct funds, if it shouldn't be in the successor, so that if we were ever to get, and when we do submit that information to the county or DOF, we're prepared and ready to respond to all of those things. So we fill out the forms, we also prepare all of the staff reports, resolutions for both the successor agency and the Oversight Board meetings. And there's been changes, I believe we spoke about it whenever I was here last, I want to say June, I remember it was warm and sunny, but we're now, you know, switching over to the countywide Oversight Board process. And as part of some of these changes, there used to be in your ROPS form this PPA tab, which we still have to do, but it takes a look at what we requested in the past versus what we actually spent, and we have to true all of that up, to see what amounts were remaining, and then now submit that to the county instead of DOF. And so the county of LA has their own process for doing that, including providing all the backup information, and there's a lot of fielding of questions back and forth, so offline, there's a lot of back and forth with both the state and the county entities, of which we help staff navigate through all of those pieces. And then we will be attending as well on January 15th this year, and if, if our contracts are new, January of next year, there's a whole new process now for submitting this information to the county Oversight Board, and just kind of helping navigate to make sure that goes smoothly, because it's a little bit of a wild card. And then we also just advise in general on kind of the best way to approach the various successor agency items, and we actually had initiated a conversation regarding admin, and trying to make sure that you all are protected, and that we don't raise flags where we don't need to raise those various flags. So I agree, the forms, trust me, I wish these forms could be more simple than they are at this point, after doing them for multiple years, but every year, which I think that this is going to become more simple, the state or the county or someone comes back with a whole slew of requests, and sometimes the state even comes back with requests for documents we've already provided, because they have a new analyst at the state that has never looked at it, and they're asking us stuff that we've already provided before. So we assist finance and you all with preparing that, or pulling up past information or things that we have to help with that process. So I think, kind of flipping to the housing contracts, so within that, I just want to point out, it's actually two different reports we prepare, so we prepare both the Housing Authority Annual Report and the SB 341 report. And again, it's not, as if finance gives us the numbers to put into those tables, we look at your trial balance details, your general ledger, again, doing an audit and verification of the numbers, making sure everything is in the correct place, and then we work back and forth to make sure everything is being accounted correctly, and that we're incorporating it accurately. So it's just kind of a process, because we have to do two different reports. You know, typically, on, and I know last year was a little different, and again, it just depends on, you know, there's been a lot of city manager turnover, finance turnover, depending on, you know, staffing needs and what level of education, because we do try to educate along the way, and to, you know, make the process as simple as possible, but we try to make it as easy as possible, and, you know, and make sure it's accurate and submitted on time to the various state departments. And then also for those reports, we do help assist with all the staff report and resolution preparation, so we're kind of an extension of staff in that capacity, and it's helping finance through making sure everything's recorded accurately, because it's not super simple all of the time.
So, big, big cities like the city of Los Angeles that have a lot of staff or whatever, they still go out and contract for services like this to do theirs?
I was literally at the Orange County Board meeting this morning for our SB 341 report.
So it's not just.
Yeah, for a lot of entities. We currently still now are, firm-wide, are still consulting to over 30 successor agencies throughout the state of California, preparing ROPS and kind of administering these processes. And then similarly, for the SB 341 and Housing Authority.
Okay, other questions or comments, staff? I mean, council? Okay, all righty. What would you like to do?
All right, I'll move staff approval. A staff recommendation, rather.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead, all right.
Okay, further comments? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number 9. We're going to conduct a public hearing. So should, do we want to talk about it amongst ourselves first, and then open the hearing like we did with the last one? like we did with the last one? Or you just want me to open the hearing?
So just so you know, the public notices were placed in the paper, they went out to neighbors in the surrounding areas of both of the facilities to see if there was any public opinion, and we received two notifications, but it was from the same person for the one that's located on Clarissa. And she thought, she was under the impression it was a dispensary where people would be coming and going, so staff spoke to her today, she had, she called, I believe, and she said that she didn't have a problem since it wasn't a dispensary, so.
Great.
So unless somebody's in the audience, we don't have any.
Okay, so I'd open the public hearing, and we'd like to hear comments from the public and the applicants if you wish to speak at this time.
Howdy, mayor and council people. Mark Malan, I was one of the applicants. It bums me out, of course, being a longtime businessman here, never doing any kind of drug sales in my past, that I wasn't voted on to have a chance to do this. I don't know why the city wants to do a monopoly. It's just not a healthy situation. When Carl and I were here months and months ago, even at that time, I said, let's not do a monopoly. There should be more than one person doing it. You're not giving the choice to people. I don't believe there should be profits in marijuana sales. To that end, I'll talk in the next issue about the taxation part, but I do not believe there should be profits involved. The proposition that we had on our ballot when we decided to have no marijuana on the island gave 100% of all the profits to charity, to local Avalon charities. I wasn't to get a salary or a stipend or anything. It was all for the kids, it was all for the charities. You decided to vote no, and then the state law says that you have to do something, so now you're setting up a monopoly, which I think is unhealthy for any government to set up. But there's questions you haven't answered yet, and you're moving forward. So you've got a day tripper, so you've got someone who's been here for a week, they checked out of their hotel at 11:00 AM, they decide to make a purchase. It's noon. Where are they going to get their purchase? There's no place to go to, so now we're sitting in front of Coney Island, in theory, doing a handshake deal where someone pays cash and walks away with marijuana, although they are licensed, although they are over 21, although it's all legal to the city code. There are things that haven't been thought through yet, and we're powering through. So I regret that this turned out to be a monopoly, and I further regret that, that I wasn't involved in that process, but the beauty of that is, is that then any marijuana given to anyone over 21 where there's no money exchanged and no value is purely a legal thing in this city and anywhere else in California. And so I still stand strong that there should not be profits in marijuana, but not have... Oh, that's the caution. Hey, you know what?
You can finish that.
Okay, you know what, it's just, it's just a frustration, and I should just share that with you. Okay, I don't think monopolies are the right way to go, I don't think it's American.
You know what, and that was a large, I'm going to respond, because that was a discussion, but because the community is conservative and is very concerned about this moving forward, we all decided, I believe unanimously at that time, that let's give it to one for a year and see how that goes, because if it's a disaster, we want to stop it, and if it's something that needs to be expanded, we can expand it. So we're giving it a year. And regarding the delivery, it has to be delivered to a building, so that kid that checks out, or that person that checks out at 11 o'clock cannot be met on the street corner with his cannabis. It would have to be delivered to his hotel room, to his residence.
But he's not in his hotel room anymore.
Well, then he, then he would not, they would, nobody would, he wouldn't be serviced. That's how it's supposed to go.
We'll see how that goes.
That's how it's supposed to go.
We'll see how that goes. Okay, but thank you for listening to me, and I look forward to expanding the services of Avalon Wellness, which is about helping people grow and obtain marijuana without money, without costs, because there shouldn't be drugs and there shouldn't be profits in this. It's a horrible thing we've gotten into in America with profits to all the drug companies.
Okay.
But are we actually talking about marijuana or are we talking about medical cannabis?
They're the exact same product. And marijuana, if you're getting it without being, if you're getting marijuana and not paying for it, any friend, anybody can give marijuana to anyone so long as they're over 21.
Right.
Okay, so long as there's no money involved, that's a state law. Okay, so there will be those people who have the, and the medical thing, it's just, that's craziness too. You can go online for $19.99 and get your medical marijuana card in two minutes on the internet. So the thing that you say it's medical marijuana, we're kidding ourselves, that's, that's baloney.
But another interesting thing was, but, I don't know, is that you had shareholders in your company that were for shareholders. Shareholders, to me, don't mean that you're doing something for free.
I understand what your intonation is, but that was just an assumption you made.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
But anyway.
Because we talked about the nonprofit, and you said you were involved with a nonprofit, and you can't take any money from a nonprofit.
Right.
And that's always the way that we look at not making money with the marijuana, but thank you.
We'll talk again, though.
I'm sure we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, other public comment? I'll close the public hearing. Council? You just, is there a recommendation to adopt the resolution declaring intent to award him medical to CJMH Group Inc.?
Need a second? I was going to comment, my understanding of the process is that the city manager and two members of the city council have received applications, went through an interview process, and the recommendation is based on all of that information, and I, there's not any other information, so I believe the recommendation is one that I'm set to follow.
So you, did you?
I think it is.
Oh, who first it is?
All right, well, then I'll move.
I don't think I've firsted yet.
It hasn't been firsted.
I didn't know if there were any other comments.
No bad comments?
And there were only two applicants, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you guys went through a rubric and?
There were four of us that went through them, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay. So there's, who's making the motion? Pam, make a motion?
I'm on the staff recommendation.
Richard did your second? Okay, call for the vote?
All ayes.
And congratulations. Now, item number 10.
This is just to have a discussion on the potential cannabis tax. It's just another part of the step. When we had these discussions, however long ago, talking about allowing a cannabis medical facility, at that time, it was voiced about not having a tax on a medical cannabis, but this is just another step in the process to bring it forward to you. Devin is in the audience, and she is the expert in this area, if you have any other questions for her. But it is, if you want to, then we could place it on our ballot in 2020, you could have a special election, of course, that costs us money, extra money, and/or just a discussion now or in the future at the time if we were going to proceed forward and put it on the ballot.
Okay, and my understanding is that staff is going to be proposing a business license fee that should cover the cost of overseeing the, from the regulatory standpoint, so this is just being discussed as a revenue measure.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So the next city council meeting will be, we're going to thoughtfully assess what we think our overhead will be to enforce our ordinance and maintain oversight, and then this tax would just be in addition to that fee.
Okay, and in terms of oversight, are you talking, I mean, like inspections of the business site?
Yes, ma'am, inspection of the business, auditing of the books and that kind of thing. We need to set up the parameters by resolution for you all to approve on how, what kind of oversight you'd like us to provide.
All right. Regulations, regulations.
I know.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just dive in. You know, I think that there's a good reason that prescription drugs, including this, are exempt from taxes. I think we really don't have any sense of what this program's going to look like, but because we will have access to the books, because my question was, did we have a pro forma or some sense of what the applicants expected the business to generate, and I don't think we really do.
No.
A year from now, we would still be able to, if we wanted to, put this on the ballot. Let's gather more information before we jump into this.
Well, and realistically, Devin, after today, what do you think a timeline is for the business to actually be operational? Is that a tough question?
We hope to, so the next step is we're going to convene with more members of city staff, specifically our planning director and fire chief, and assess the brick and mortar facility, determine if there's any safety improvements or security improvements that need to be made in their opinion, and then we'll draft those conditions of approval. Hopefully, we'll have those ready for you by the January 15th meeting, and then at that time, we could convene with the applicant to get a earnest timeline of when they think they'd be in operation.
Okay.
So it is, we have 14 months before the election deadline at this moment, so lots of time.
But you need some time to do signatures for about measure as well, don't you?
You, you all.
No, you just, not for this, okay.
Yeah, you guys could vote. It's, we only need a 50% of the public if it's just a general tax. If you want the tax to go to something specific, we would, it would be a special tax, we would need a two-thirds vote.
So if somebody said, I just want to donate some money, that doesn't have to be put on the ballot, right?
Correct.
I mean, if somebody out of the kindness of their heart said, I'm just going to give you 10% of all the proceeds and let's call it a day, that is possible too?
Yes.
Okay. I throw that out there. Okay.
My thoughts were also to hold this over for some time and get the business up in operations and have a look a little at what's really happening with it.
Yeah, my understanding is the city wants us to act like a February, somewhere around there, of 2020.
Right, okay.
Okay, great.
So do we officially hold this over, or this was just a discussion item?
Discussion and we got consensus.
Okay, thank you. Item number, oh, questions on the, no, I think we're good. Item number 11.
Okay, so this has to do with Southern Cal Edison's plans, announced plans to request rate increases on our water that I'm sure you've received in the mail. Everyone has the notice of their filing of an advice letter, which is an informal process, although the city, as well as any other person, has the right to request that it be treated as a more formal process. We do have a group that Councilman Olson and I are participating in, which includes representatives from various aspects of the community, including Hamilton Cove, or from the island itself, because this involves the entire Water Edison Chamber, various groups like that. And because of the timing of this, we are actually having our meeting to discuss our response to this tomorrow. So we will be recording out, we obviously will be filing something in response, we just want to make sure that we've got a considered response. And I will just say that anyone that wants to send a letter to the Division of Water regarding the advice letter can certainly do so. I think it would be good for the staff there to understand, you know, that we're a small community and what the impact of what's being proposed would be upon people, but again, there are other more formal responses that the city and the group will be undertaking, and we'll report back about that.
Thank you.
So if it's like most people, like through the thing in the trash, right? When I got it in my bill? So, I mean, because we get them, it seems like we get them all the time.
Yeah, I was hoping I was going to call on staff to maybe help us set up a page, a separate page to deal with this, and one of the things we could put up is the notice, a copy of the notice on our website would be good.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Item number 12, requests for interpretation and clarification on Avalon Municipal Code.
If I could, item number 12 as specifically written now does make reference to two companies, to two properties owned by the island company, and so if we were to proceed on this item as written right now, council members Hernandez and Cassidy McGugan would have to recuse themselves. So what I would ask them to do is to at least right now, recuse yourself, and then there may be a discussion on the council about holding this over, which we can discuss if you're out. Does that make?
I, okay. My thought, my request was going to be to hold it over and split the subjects.
Yes.
So that the, instead of...
An unconflicted person is going to say that.
Oh, I got it.
Yes.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Okay, well, if that is the, because I don't think, I don't think...
So I just have a question, because I'm, how do you unring the conflict bell? So to my knowledge, there are no other applicants who have filed for signs on a canopy that extends over. It's just the island company.
Uh, well, actually...
So what we're proposing, if I understand, is to pull this from the agenda and then redo the staff report to pretend that the only applicant is not the island company and that this is a generic question.
Because...
In order to avoid the conflict.
Well, and also, this would set precedent if the council were to do this, because there are other awnings out there that may extend, currently extend over four feet or may be coming. And so the council can decide to proceed along this application right now and consider it, or to set a precedential value, you could hold it over until the next meeting and consider the two municipal code sections in a vacuum, knowing that it would apply to all properties in the city of Avalon.
In a pretend vacuum, which is not a vacuum.
It's not, but it's true, there's other properties in town that have this sign violating our side ordinance.
I'm just saying, from the standpoint of a conflict, we already have a piece of paper that says the island company is impacted as of this moment by this.
Correct.
But I would request that we hold it over and separate it.
And is that of any big, whatever with y'all, with, okay, I mean, that does, and I was looking at the island company as well.
I wasn't aware that the proposal was going to be to hold it over and split it, so it's the first time I've heard of it. I mean, that's, a conclusion has been reached.
Well, again, we could go forward with it with these three right now, but again, you can, you can, you can take it back because it will apply to all properties in the city and create a precedential value. The entire council could, could consider it. The issue that council member Albert raised could still come up at that, they, those two council members could decide that, quote, "The bell has been rung," and, and they have to recuse themselves, but this will give them the opportunity to make that decision separate from a specific application to a specific property.
Okay, he's recommending to split them, and I will say okay as well, but I also want to knock, the walk-off sign, that's going to go before the planning commission first?
No.
No.
So we need, that needs to be addressed.
So I think they're, I'm sorry.
The question on any walk-off sign is, 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 under the municipal code, any walk-up sign, when you look at the municipal code, could be a prohibited sign.
Right.
Which means it's not allowed.
So we want to talk about that, so that these kids can also, these council people can also participate?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And then what is the purpose of splitting, I guess, I'm confused, and why are we splitting the two items?
Are we splitting them between 127 and 125, or are we splitting them between canopy and walk-off?
Canopy and walk-off. Because there are other canopies in the city that one may be proposed or currently exist that may extend to four feet. So again, the question for the council would be, in interpreting this provision of the municipal code, was it your intention to, for this four-foot provision to just apply to blade signs or to apply to all signs regardless of whether they were blades?
And then...
Okay, and then I, and I did just have a procedural question. It's sort of one of these things where the planning commission has certain responsibilities, and I feel like we're leapfrogging the planning commission. The three sides of the canopy, does that require a signed variance approval?
Yes, they have to come back for that.
And the planning commission has not acted on that.
Correct.
So it could be that the planning commission could say, well, you know what, you have perfectly great historical sign on the side of your building that everybody could see from the boat when they get here, and we think that's a good one, and we're not going to grant a variance. And then that would obviate the need to even have a discussion.
But anybody coming forward, because right now, the Glenmore Plaza, I don't know how they got theirs, but, because that had to be a variance, right? When they put their thing up?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's non-conforming.
Okay. So I guess the thing is, if we want to try to get into the business...
Did that predate the ordinance, or that was under the same ordinance?
It predated the current ordinance. I don't know, I don't know when that came first.
If, if there was an application that came in that asked for a variance, the variance is on the three different signs, but you cannot get a variance if the city council code says the only signs allowed are four feet, up to four feet. That I wouldn't, I would tell, and when we've done that in the past, when people have come to the planning commission and asked for things that are prohibited, our answer to them has been, "This is not, this is not allowed. You have to go to the council to amend the code." So we have two instances here where if an interpret, if the council's interpretation is one thing, the only way to allow these signs would be for the council to amend the municipal code.
Right.
And there'd be no action that the planning commission could take.
Because going forward, who knows who else might come forward and then we have to go through this again, one way or the other.
The sign that extends beyond, signs that extend beyond four feet are prohibited.
Period.
So you can't get a variance for something that's actively prohibited.
Yeah, so we have to discuss whether we think the municipal code should be allowed to do that, to have a sign, be able to have a sign on them or not, going forward.
Because the, the...
If we want to do that.
Because the, the thought was perhaps that four foot only applied to the blade, blade signs and not awnings.
I don't know what a blade sign is.
Blades or signs are the ones that stick out perpendicular to the face of the building.
Okay. Let's split it up, bring it back.
That was all his motion.
I know. So I'm just saying, okay, Madam Osh, I'll second it. Call for the vote.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
No, they don't care.
Mark, did you want to say something?
Splitting it up, meaning in other, in order to enable...
Them to vote on them.
The city council to, okay.
Consider as a whole, the, the municipal code issue apart from...
Of the canopy versus the walk-off.
The walk-off and those, both of them.
At this, at this, in a...
But isn't the walk-off question a question of interpretation of the code too?
Yes, so both issues are coming back.
Okay.
Not specific to the island company property, but specific to the council's interpretation of the municipal code.
Right.
Okay.
I think it'd be of great value if we had pictures of what these signs are. We're talking about terms that we don't understand, be it blade sign, be it walk-on, walk-off, walking around. I would just think it would make sense to have pictures so that we can agree on it. I want to come here and support the island company for sure. They're doing phenomenal things. I don't think anyone invests more in the city than the island company. I don't think anyone has more risk than the island company. So although I'm not happy with a 20-foot electric sign on a roof, there's a lot of signage that I would be in favor for. And I think if we had pictures, then we could understand what it is. To have 12-inch letters on a canopy that extends over the sidewalk is a non-issue in comparison to that 25-foot letter that's electric. So if we could get pictures when it comes back, it would be really helpful and I think that we should really take care of the people who invest in the city. Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I understand what you're talking about. And that's it. Do you have those pictures that the city hold, Amanda? I mean, it's not in the pack of...
I have pictures of what the island company is applying.
No, and that's what, that's what Mark is saying, so when it comes back.
But I think Mark's point is a good one. If we want to ask a generic question, does our sign ordinance apply to walk-off signs anywhere in town, Crescent Avenue, anywhere else? How do we want to handle that type of advertising or promotion? So having an exhibit of what that is, we can include that in our next, in when we bring them back.
Okay, and then, okay, but on that walk-off sign thing, if I just wanted to put a mosaic there and not put a word there, is that still a walk-off sign?
Yeah. I, sign is interpreted as something that advertises the business, location. If you want to put a mermaid in the sidewalk or a Garibaldi, I don't, that to me would be just a different type of encroachment, public art, it's not signage.
Oh, okay.
You'd still need to, you'd still need to bring, yes, exactly. Council will still have to prove it as an encroachment.
Okay. All right, so item 12's been held over.
Okay. All right.
Item number 13.
Oh, hang on, let me go.
Oh, sorry. Slap me, they could. Well, so we've got Bob for the next four items.
See how we do, see how fast we get through these. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Okay, we're, this item's the continuing discussion for the projects associated with the opening of the Vons store. Last meeting, we discussed parking modifications on Sumner, Catalina and Beacon. Tonight, I'm bringing forward the proof of concept for the intersection improvements at Sumner and Beacon. Next meeting, I'll be prepared to discuss the delivery movements for the Catalina and Beacon intersection, as we said prior. Okay, so the first one...
And, and, and just for the record, because this item does not concern, you know, this is the city's discussion of traffic flow is unrelated to a specific condition of approval for Vons. If it does involve a specific condition of approval for Vons, at that point, or at least with, at the next meeting, if the discussion about the traffic, if the discussion about the trucks does involve that specific condition of approval, then the council members who are recused from Vons would have to recuse themselves.
Excuse me, but the recusal was when the island company still owned the property? And the island company doesn't own the property anymore?
But actually, your recusal is because of your location of the property and the island company has a, island company still has a property interest in that property. If, if the Vons doesn't open and, and at any time the property can revert back to the island company, if certain conditions of approval are met. So that condition is still out there.
So Richard, because he drew the king, can participate?
Correct, because Councilmember Albers has taken Councilmember Sampson's place on the conflict, so Richard can still participate.
Now I drew the ace.
No, that was for the other.
Oh, that was the other one.
That was for the other one.
I knew I won one or not.
I have another deck of cards.
Who drew? I drew that one.
Okay, sorry, Bob.
Okay, that being said, we're on slide one right now.
Okay.
Slide one, what this shows us is the overall layout, as we discussed previously, so, and it shows you that we've added a few more modifications that, as we look at the median there, the median is now defined as a 40-foot median, and you could see where we had marked the paint dots previously in the field, if you've been kind of visualizing how trucks are flowing through there. So that's that yellow piece in the middle of the road. And the intent of what that median is, is so that we don't get the sweeping curve. So what we really do is, once somebody is headed in a direction that is kind of northwesterly, so heading to the waterfront on Sumner, that we know where they're, they'd have to take a hard left turn, and you can see that, instead of taking a sweeping movement. Okay, so what that does is it makes this intersection safer, because like I've expressed to you before, if we look at each other and we look at each other's eyes when we're making these movements, whether it's a ped and a vehicle, or we also have, just like we have on the five-way project here, a area where that vehicle or that ped will operate, we have expectations, and that makes it safer so that we can make the correct decisions we're in here. So you can notice that we have parking restrictions on, on both sides of, anywhere in the intersection, there's no parking allowed in the intersection. So that is an impact to those residential units that we already discussed previously last meeting, where you see that red curb, and the red curb is already there at Vons right now, and it has been throughout the whole project on the other side, right there in front of Vons frontage. You got high vis, high visibility crosswalks, and that's where you have the ladder crosswalks, and you see those at a distance, you just don't see that flat line there, so you can see them more pronounced. And you see the median placement, and the median, which you'll see at the very end here, is actually two rubber speed bumps for this trial basis. So what the anticipation is, is that you can mount over that. So if the truck is not trained yet, or the fire truck, or a commercial truck, they actually can ride over that. If you're a golf cart, you're not going to feel very comfortable at all of taking that sweeping movement and going over those speed bumps, because you know that anything over a half an inch in a golf cart, you get a severe bump. These are going to be three inches in height, but rounded in profile. Okay?
So Bob, we really, we already had a good discussion of this, and you, you gave us the presentation on this speed bump and pretty much everything that's happening in this intersection, or am I just having weird dreams? Didn't we talk about this?
We had that as in the first piece I rolled out, and actually, it was when we talked about that piece of whether we wanted to go forward with the off-site parking, so that diagonal parking.
Oh, I thought you presented everything, because I distinctly remember this, the speed bump and the discussion of the fire trucks and other vehicles.
And so what, the intent tonight is, that was the initial concept, and what we have done here, as you see these turning movements, it's a proof of concept to the community. So if, as we're moving forward, I'm showing you, if you look at that design vehicle in the far left corner, that's a fire truck. That is the turning movements, the wheel pass of it, and I'm proving to you that it actually, to the community, that it works, okay? That the design works. And so it's proof of concept. And, and we refine the medians, in case there was questions, what's rolling out, people can listen to this and they say, "What is that median about? How long is that going to be there? Is this really the final improvement?" What I'm trying to say is, we want your input, community. Here's what our intent is, here's what we're going to roll out for the next 60 days. Please come in and talk to us, and then I can report that data and those findings to you. And then we can say, "Do we want to modify this? Do we want to start putting some more dollars into this and finishing these improvements and calling this something good?" Because I just, the test case, especially with something like this on this community, I would think that we want to make sure that these improvements are right, okay?
And in that regard, I just have one question. I'm wondering whether we want a stop sign when you get to the point where the Vons driveway...
So that was initially in the Vons plans, and we always can add that. So we, what I would recommend in traffic engineering is start with a minimum set of improvements. If there's something right of way that seems unsafe, we can go before the 60 days. But to see how it operates without that, because that's additional, so you're out there in the middle of the night, and now I'm making another stop and I don't have to, maybe, once I put that in, I may not obey that and I'll just roll through it. Now we've got people not obeying our traffic control devices. So one of the first things you do is put the minimum improvements in and see how they work, and then we build on that.
And I'm sorry, from my, from my understanding, were you talking about by the, by the Catalina Lodge, stop signs there?
No. No. As you're traveling towards the ocean on Sumner.
Okay.
And you get to the point where the driveway, the Vons driveway is.
Oh.
You know, the difficulty is, we really only have about a golf cart, maybe two golf cart lengths there. So if somebody runs, you know, is anxious and they speed through it, you could create a snafu.
Right.
I'm just wondering if, how people, because we're adding one more direction into which traffic is flowing in this whole...
Exactly. And what the Vons plans didn't have and what we've added is the median. And that, and so that takes a sweeping movement away, but it also channelizes that traffic in that direction. You can see, oh, they're coming, so if I'm waiting at Vons, I'm looking and go, "Yep, they're coming up to the intersection and they have the right of way. I need to wait for them, because I have the stop sign." We'll see how that works, you know, and I'm ready to install a stop at any time you guys direct us, okay?
Okay. And I just have another little question with this, with the length of the median. Median. So if I'm cruising down, and I was here earlier, if I'm cruising down Beacon, right? Okay, and then I turn and I go like this and I go, "Oh my goodness, I'm going to just flip a U right there." I'm going to flip a U and you've got cars coming this way. If the median was out a little bit further, would that keep them from being able to do that?
Okay, so you can see from the truck turning movements, we want to start with this. And then, so we also can post no U-turn.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so we could do that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, take the easy way.
But, so the initial take at this was to make sure that we can get all the design vehicles through here. And the most critical ones are our fire trucks and our commercial trucks.
Right.
Okay? And even if they have to drag the back wheel, it's not, we're proving that that's not needed, but somebody could get sloppy coming through the intersection and drag that one wheel across. Or if we're going code three and we need to go a little faster, you know, maybe we need to do that movement, okay?
Right, okay.
So then, basically, the rest of these is just proving, you see the design vehicle changes, it gets larger and larger, and it just shows you how we, you know, we're proving you can move through this in each direction. Okay, so really not that much additional information from, to glean from those slides, it's just proof. And then this is that speed bump, okay? Now imagine two of those side by side, and then they have a yellow stripe, double stripe around it, and so that's what builds the median. So all of that is mountable. And, and then we can see what we want to do permanently from there, whether it's this or if there's something else. But we wanted to so, do, put something in there that could be mounted, okay? So, so all modifications are proposed to be implemented on a 60-day trial period. At the end of the 60-day period, I'll be back to present, you know, what our findings are and make further recommendations for keeping or modifying the measures that we've installed. The estimated cost of materials is $7,500 to complete this. The Vons have, we have communicated with Vons in the last few days, and they are open to cost sharing if we can concur with satisfying condition seven. And condition seven was that...
And we're not going to talk about that.
Yeah, we...
Because we, it's not a ten-dice and we have council members.
It's something that we can have a further discussion on, okay? But I'm just, we have reached out to Vons and they have been on some positive comments about all the things we're doing, okay?
Okay, great.
Okay? So any other input on that?
Now, does the community have any input as well?
Yeah, I, I spent a lot of time driving through there in the buses and looking at that spot now, is it, has some different conflicts that, there could be a few ways to resolve it. And about the last week that David Jenkins was here, we discussed, it would take a little cooperation from the island company, but coming down Sumner, and imagine a left turn, or correction, coming down Beacon and a left turn onto Sumner with the island company buses, tours, coming into the gate that they came out of. And, you know, it's set up in there to make a wide turn around a post. I think some of the largest buses, they have to make a little bit of an adjustment. But essentially, that would eliminate traffic having to come down, as it does now, you know, right there in front of Vons, at the corner, make a left turn onto Beacon and back down onto Catalina Avenue. And then a left turn in there. It's putting a lot of miles with some heavy metal coming through that part of town that's going to wind up fairly impacted with, you know, some of the, the trucks delivering at Vons and all that. It would eliminate a lot of that. But not only that, the compounded benefit would be that the motorcycles that are parked where they are at the moment on Catalina Avenue could actually be placed across the street, and that would open up an area for the taxis, Holiday Inn, and the buses, the city buses, to pull in there, you know, coming off of Third Street or wherever, and they'd have, you know, a number of positions there to be able to line up with motorcycles across the street. The only reason the motorcycles, from my understanding historically, that they were put across the street was because of the wide berth that the heavy buses had to take to come back into that, into the plaza. But, you know, in a nutshell, it would, it would potentially resolve a lot of issues that are currently a problem. That is, the buses by law are supposed to be dedicated to that parking spot right there where the benches are, and that's state law. And it's, it's being shared by the cabs. It's not really legal if something happens in there. It's not really legal if something happens in there. It's one of the places the city has a lot of liability. But if you open that up by putting motorcycles across the street, there is room for everybody to, uh, pretty much maneuver and keep, you know, legally on the curbside without having to double park.
Okay.
But there are a number of other stops too, we can talk about it some other time, that need to be legal in the city, like in the whole picture, because we've got at least three others that, we've got tremendous liability and a lot of double parking issues. One last one, Vons itself. When the bus system first started in town, there was, uh, there was a fixed schedule. And that schedule got taken away. And I'm not going to get into the details why or the argument, but it was a bad idea. And when you take the, all the way up the canyon, the residences, the residents is up there with the conservancy, you come on down Bird Park and, uh, you know, the area all around, Field of Dreams there, there's a lot of people that initially got real excited about this to be able to go get their groceries into town. And I was there witnessing this real time and as they took away the bus stop, people are sitting out there with their groceries, didn't know when it was going to come, their stuff's melting and whatever. Alls they needed is know, just like, just about every other town in America, what time the bus comes and what time the bus leaves. They'll take their refrigerated stuff and the key on that is going to eliminate a lot of, a lot of golf carts coming to town or cars that at one point, these people had great, you know, faith in the system and, and they quit using it. So, and you know, we can talk about that more, but there are a number of other stops we need to get legalized.
Yes, okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, so all I'm doing is looking for direction on this. Do we keep on heading forward?
Looks good.
Go forward.
Go for it.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. Okay, item number 14. Bob Greenlaw.
Okay, back to development impact fees, our favorite topic. This item provides an update on the development impact fee report. In September, I provided a schedule to council which had various tasks that would lead to a delivery of the final report. The major task to be completed was to meet with the stakeholders, including city departments, developers, contractors, and landowners. This has now been completed, the data compiled and the info is to the consultant. The report is being modified relative to this input. So the major areas of comment that we heard, and there was plenty of comments, um, so I'm just mentioning about maybe 15 of these so we don't extend out too far and you'll hear the rest of them when we get actually the report to you. Concern with treating dwelling units different than multiple family units. There was a, the multiplier effect of commercial growth, inclusionary housing provisions, additional firefighter growth, also revert, reserve firefighter growth, project list for infrastructure. Is everything including and not to reduce the quality of life? Has population growth equal development growth? Is the development impact fee schedule for different uses, say like vacation, part-time uses, like vacation second homes, is there a factor in that? Because they're not here the whole time, even though they were building another whole unit. How are the funds managed? You know, so the funds that we, uh, put in trust to be able to complete these improvements and have to be spent over, within five years. Can, uh, let's see, can't even read my writing on that one. So, um, general plan has estimates of population growth by 2030, which is likely to be overseen considering the water allocation and potential real estate, that combination. Acquisition fee for land is high, that was in there for like park facilities. Parking fund, where can the new parking be located? So we need to identify those things. Service population estimates, the list of park projects, you know, need to be updated per the master plan that we just completed. So our previous schedule had us adopting the fees on 11/20, okay? And we are now at 12/18, so we missed that and I'm sorry to say that, but.
Oh, I thought you were at November 2020.
Yeah. So we were on the course, you know, a course behind that schedule, so we need to readjust. So I recommend adjusting that forward three months. And I want to share some of my thoughts on that, why, so we'd be adopting on March 5th meeting. So I want to share some of my thoughts where with this delay, I offer some of that may reduce some of the angst that we're losing the opportunity to collect fees, okay? Because that's why we'd be pushing hard to get this done, more so not than instead of just making sure we're getting it right, because we want to make sure it's right and it's defensible. Okay? So first, I would like to point out that without water allocations, the fee program will sit idle, okay? And because these fees are for projects that produce impacts, okay? And so for example, a per-unit residential, the, the fees are based on a per-unit residential, not a square foot expansion. It really is an impact, that number of units or people that would go in those units. We can change that when we get to that final way, if we want to modify that, that's part of one of our tasks when we get to that finish line. Is that really how, that we're developing here? Or do we want to capture just pieces of a renovation that's expanding that may capture a few more people in there? Because really it's the people that make the impacts. And then it's per square foot for all the other categories. So your single-family and your multifamily residential are per unit. So looking ahead to see what projects, either new residential unit or new other categories that we would have, and in consulting, in consulting with our planning director, do we have seen anything on the horizon for the next six months? And the answer is no, we don't, okay? And it really depends on the water allocation. So if we have La Cacita's coming up, um, you know, there's potential water allocation if that water supply is developed. If we get Prop 1 funds, that doesn't mean necessarily there would be new water allocation, especially when, I'm reading 540 out there on the chart and we, you know, we're not even into stage, you know, we're into stage one, you know? So we're not even where we got a reliable source of water that's sustainable there. So whether we feel comfortable that that would even happen. So if it's all related to that water allocation, there may be some time ahead. And that's why I'm saying that I'm offering this, that I think that we're in a safe zone to make sure that we keep on proceeding on this schedule. So then also, have we lost anything? Because I think that that could be a source of ink, you know, that when David Jenkins was here, when we started this, this path to go on these fees, um, we would consider the largest projects that were just built and where they were subject to these fees. So Vons, that was already approved before we even started on this journey. Trailhead was already approved. So in Vons, it, it may be unique because we already had existing some square footage and now we put, you know, a new square, is there even a credit back on that? And that, there's a potential there. Trailhead, there's a different use for that residential property, but there was already an impact from that property. So there could be credits that get back so that you feel that we've lost those. No, we haven't. And the outwater is actually, they're reducing their capacity. You're actually getting less units out of it because there were some things that were very tight in there and they're making them, you know, a little bit higher-end units. And Zane Gray, it was prior to the study. So that's what I offered. And then Hamilton Cove is really where we've seen some new residential units, but that's on a development agreement. So that's not even subject to the fees because it's on a previous development agreement. So what I'm saying is, we're safe from before, we're safe for the next six months and we have this new schedule. Um, you know, and we've received some great stakeholder input and we're modifying it so that we can feel that it's defensible. So any questions?
Okay. Not a question, but a comment. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, certainly not how water impacts our ability if we had a developer fee, but part of this is just my general angst about every, there are so many other communities that have managed to do this. Why does it feel like we are reinventing the wheel and that it's so hard and that somehow we are so different? We're not. This is the process that cities do all of the time. So I feel like you have so many other things you're working on. If we have a consultant, they should be able to answer these questions fairly easily. And the rest of it is math. So, and I'm, and, and I appreciate what you're saying about, okay, we don't really have water for water allocations, but we do have the possibility that it could rain and Edison could start giving out allocations. The development agreement, my recollection is it actually exempted developer fees. So somebody might want to look at that for the single-family, for the lots that are being sold, not for the big, the main ones, because those were considered in the environmental of the original Hamilton Cove, but those single families were not. In, in any event, I hear what you're saying and I know what's on your plate and I appreciate that you're not saying, I can't do it till the end of next year, you know, March, I think is a reasonable goal. But again, I just don't want that feeling like we are reinventing a wheel that other communities have managed to get on the car.
It's been how long? Two years? Three years? How long have I been on the council?
Yeah, a little longer than that.
I just.
Well, and we've had, you know, changes in administration and in the position.
In fairness, it didn't get off the ground until Mr. Greenlaw came onto staff.
Right, yeah, recognizing that. So, I mean, the bottom line is, I think that the March date is a reasonable date and, and I appreciate that, so.
Thank you. Any other comments on development impact fees? Nope?
Before my turn.
Oh, oh, yes. Okay, and number, item number 15.
Okay.
Beach sand.
This is what Jordan has up for me. Okay. This item authorized city manager amend the existing professional service agreement with Michael Baker, MBI, to provide assistance with upcoming grants not to exceed an amount of $15,000. So I'm providing a little background here just for the public. It's been anticipated that State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways would provide another round of funding for its California beach restoration and erosion control programs. On December 4th, 2018, Division of Boating and Waterways advised the city they were accepting applications for the two programs relative to the city's South Beach Restoration Project. These include the Shoreline Erosion Control Program and the Public Beach Restoration Program. The general objective of these programs is to preserve and protect the California shoreline, minimize the economic losses caused by beach erosion, and maintain urgently needed recreational beach areas. Sounds like we're a good fit for that. The programs are highly competitive and provide up to 50% or 85% of the project cost, depending on the program. So up to this point, Michael Baker has been the consultant studying and has been in the development of the sediment study. Yet there is need for assistance with the technical components of the grant application that is due February 1st of this next year. An amendment to MBI's contract would be the most efficient way to accomplish this task as the consultant is highly qualified for this task and has the most direct access to all the needed information at timely basis. Additionally, the consultant is very aware of the competitive requirements for the grant application, is well prepared to address them and not to exceed amount of $15,000 as requested. The intent of the item was, is to assemble the team necessary to complete the work. Our current grant team, Townsend, will be the lead. MBI will provide technical support and staff will review and approve the work, the $15,000 estimate with a guess, to make sure that we have sufficient resources to address the requirements of the grant. It could be much less than that.
Right, cheers.
Okay, and one is, so this like, take a look at some of the questions that MBI will be tasked with. I have this available. So this is from the application, so there's, it's two programs and the questions are very, very similar for each program.
I wonder why.
Yeah. So, um, you know, you can see that, I can just run through a couple of these real quick. Provide a brief, high-level description of our project scope, including, not limited to this phase, okay? Not a very difficult question, but describe the history of the project. But then as we get down, you know, if this project would construct a revetment, breakwater drain, harbor channel, seawall, cliff, retaining wall or whatever, how would it alter the natural shoreline processes? Please describe the structure being built. And so those are all things that come right out of that study and, and Dr. Jenkins answers those very readily. So it's not that we'd be tasking Dr. Jenkins himself to do all of that, but hey, can you put an hour into it to help us answer a few of these questions? Give that information to Mac Chatila and that he can have his environmental team and his engineering team, some of those pieces of his team, answer these in a very succinct manner that hits a home run. Because you'll, as you see going down, there are some things that are very technical in nature. So Townsend, what they do for half of us is really a lobbyist. The other half is they're very good at writing grants. I've been through four of them now with them and we're waiting for the results, but they do write a good grant. But they always are coming to like Public Works saying, okay, I need you to do this piece. I need you to do these things for me. I need this estimate. I need you to have this, and so I need to put that back. And that's my piece of it. Right now, I don't have time by February 1st to do this. That's why I'm tasking Michael Baker to be on that team. And so I just want to make sure that there were sufficient resources. I know we've had discussions, do we always have the right team writing grants? I'm putting the A-team together. Because when it comes down, if you look at the ranking criteria for this grant, there's pieces that get points that we've already lost just from the get-go. If you have federal funding allocated for it, you get 20 points. We don't. If you have SEQA done, you get like 15 points. We don't. If you have, you know, so it goes down and now we're saying, there's 280 points, I think, for it and we're down 80 points to start. So now I better hit a home run with everything else I'm doing. That's where Townsend comes in and really puts their lobbying efforts at the state because when this grant gets approved, it gets approved at the state legislature level and gets as a line item in there. And they can appropriate, you know, seven projects, okay? And so that's why even if we're not hitting that federal funding, because realize that some of the, even with Metro, they're having a self-help county. We're a self-help city now that we, if we consider the warfage consideration. Now we're funding that piece and that's our strong argument that we should be talking to our legislators, is like, we don't need the federal government, we like them, but to move forward with this project, we're self-helping and we just need the state's help to get this over the finish line. So I really, I see we have one shot at this because it's 2021 funding and after that, it's the next year. And we'll probably be very interested in getting this project done way before that.
No, it's 20 funding.
Well, 2021 is the fiscal year on it, okay?
Okay, June of 2020. July of 2020.
Yeah, okay, and then it goes into 20.
We could start in the fall of 2020. I mean, that's.
Okay.
If they award it.
If they, if they award it. Yeah, okay.
So do you have any idea what you think that dollar, I mean, you're saying we have $100,000, so if there's a match or whatever, but how much money do you think for the?
For our project?
Yeah.
Okay, so when you got the sediment study, which I wasn't concurring with what, some of the high-dollar estimates that threw everything in the kitchen sink in, that we were talking about the dredging and it was like a million bucks. And I said, no way. And then so then I reached out to several contractors and in the low end, it could be $300,000, okay? And so we're somewhere in between those numbers, but that's.
Okay.
Part of even Michael Baker looking at it and trying to put a real number within this next month. And that would be one of their tasks is like, again, reach out to those contractors, you know, that are here, you know, that are very interested in this type of work. Because there, there's folks that do just dredging on this coast.
Okay, so that was one of my questions in terms of Michael Baker, because we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars with Michael Baker and Michael Baker gold-plates everything. So you are directing them, we're not doing any of this fancy, we're not buying our own scooper, we're, it's the basic dredging plan.
It's a dredging plan and we're trying to.
And is there a way to incorporate the seawall in this, in this grant?
Yes, it is. It's where that location is, okay? So that's still not been determined where the best location for that seawall is.
No, no, no. I'm saying the replacement of the wall that we just did the injection on. So my question was, okay, we've got all the, the revetment rocks, we're going to put them in, right? And then I guess we're pulling them out before it's summer? Is that your plan?
I, yes, yes, that is. Really, the rock is a cheap insurance policy for you. I mean, it's $24 a ton, there are 70 tons out there.
Right.
And what I just don't, I don't want to see us, all of a sudden we get a very significant surge.
No, no, I understand why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. My question is, is it a project that makes, that's economically feasible to put the rock in during the winter, pull it out for the summer, put it back in for next winter, include that seawall as part of this grant application? Because that's holding up the beach, that is erosion, that clearly qualifies under what they describe as a project.
And, you know, there are some possibilities we could do. We could, we could.
And then I can see why Michael Baker would be needing up to $15,000 because we haven't done the work to see what that wall, we don't really have a technical description, we don't know what that's going to be. know what that's gonna be.
Yeah, I do, I do, I have been pondering that, and I have been talking to other specialists in it, so I have a concept with that. I just, it really depends on the delivery date of when we want that done, and if we want the rock there. And then, if the Coastal Commission is still gonna be accepting of that rock in a longer term there, because, you know, for us to get that place, I had to say, "This is strictly temporary. It's to exactly what I've told you."
Okay, but we will have had the experience of a winter, we can demonstrate it didn't do anything bad, we can file for proper permits.
Yeah, we, we were heading to file for proper permits anyway, because that's one of the requirements.
Yeah, that's the only reason that we had to scramble with them, is because we didn't have time for permits. But the plan that I'm talking about would enable us to apply for permits to get through another winter, if it's a plan that works. And, I mean, what are you estimating a wall's gonna cost? 300,000, maybe? I mean, 85% of that would certainly be.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try and see if there's some pieces of it that can be modularized and prefabbed, and then tie those together. Instead of trying to form that out there in, you know, once I get the footing poured, is there something I can prefab and then tie it together, and then make sure that it's holding up?
It just makes so much more sense to me to mobilize, to do the dredging, to do the seawall, all as one project, and to get grant funds funded. That's what I'm trying to say. So, I don't know if that's what you, the thinking direction that you were going in, but I'd encourage you to think about that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep the projects moving forward, so I'm always pushing to move the projects forward, and as there's grants that come.
And I'm always thinking about, how are we gonna pay for the project?
Yeah, I know, and that's what I'm setting up.
If we can work together a little more, I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm trying to set up all along the way that we're eligible for grants, just like on this five-way project.
We've lived with ugly beach and ugly seawall for a while, and I think people would understand if we were spending the extra time to get grant funding for it, so that we could do it without depleting our money that we need for other things. That, that's, that's all. So, on that basis, I think the 15,000 that you're asking for Michael Baker makes sense to me.
Okay, is that a motion?
And I.
And I'd make a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Call for the votes. Comments? Okay. Item number sixteen.
Yeah, she has.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
All eyes.
Okay, and continuing the marathon here.
[laughing].
Okay, so this item directs the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Disability Access Consultant, DAC, for the preparation of an Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan, for a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000. Okay? And so, a little, provide a little, again, a background for the public. The American with Disabilities Act is a comprehensive civil rights law for persons with disabilities in both employment and the provision of goods and services that the city provides. The ADA states that its purpose is to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Congress emphasized that the ADA seeks to dispel stereotypes and assumptions about disabilities, and to assure equality of opportunity, full participation, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency for people with disabilities. An ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan is prepared in fulfillment of these requirements set forth in Title II of the American with Disabilities Act. Title II of the ADA stipulates that public entities must identify and evaluate all programs, activities, and services, and review all policies, practices, and procedures that govern administration of the programs, activities, and services for all governmental entities employing more than 50 people. And we're way above that threshold, I think it's 102, 108, somewhere in there. The administration requirements include, administrative requirements include completion of a self-evaluation, development of an ADA-compliant procedure, designation of a person who is responsible for overseeing Title II compliance, and development of a transition plan if the self-evaluation identifies any structural modifications necessary for compliance.
Fine.
So, the proposed work, as presented in this proposal, will take 11 months, 12 months, in that range, to complete for a proposed cost of $57,400. And one of the things that was brought to my attention, we would, right now, they've said we have 17 miles of road, which is 34 miles of sidewalk. I need to talk to the consultant to make sure that that number is right, okay? So, it may reduce that, that piece of the public right-of-way. When you look at the, the piece, there was about 20,000 of that. We could probably reduce that down. But I still would stay with that 60 if we do approve it, and then what I try to do is get, you know, we can add further direction here, and reduce that, make sure that we're getting the most economical value out of this. Okay? So, and then that would be split over two fiscal years, $30,000 in each fiscal year. And there was a split, if you looked at, you know, roughly the, the components within there, that there was this, most of the facilities were 70% in general fund, general fund-type facilities, and 30% of those were in the harbors, so that's how we got that split, to be able to do that. So, I'm available for questions on that.
And a little bit more background also, the council may recall that we have received a letter from a disabilities group, asking us to upgrade, and so we've been able to forestall litigation as we're developing on this plan in accordance with, with Mr. Greenlaw. So, and we've discussed, not getting into it, we've discussed the number, the demands previously in closed session. So, this would, this would help us in that potential litigation.
Well, and there's a document that the city manager has that is really intense, somebody who did that self-evaluation or that evaluation, and I think that would be helpful, and maybe, I don't know, really helpful in that it's pages and pages and pages, and lists and lists and lists of, I don't know if you've been able to see, but every little thing in this. So, somebody took a good thorough look at Avalon already, just through their own, not anything we paid for.
Yeah, and so, I.
Exactly. So, I spent the afternoon looking at ADA self-evaluation plans that other cities have done, starting in 2012. I don't know where our city was, but my feeling is 60,000 does a lot of curb cuts, provides real services for people with disabilities, as opposed to a plan. And each of these plans, it's, again, it's boilerplate. Third out of 100 pages, 50 of it is boilerplate. There's a form that each department has to go through and look at the services they provide, the programs they provide, the equipment that they have. The consultant's not gonna do that for your departments, your departments are gonna have to do that work anyway. Most of the cities assign their human resources manager to be the ADA-compliant. They already have a complete procedure all settled out that you could read through and see, gee, this makes sense, why wouldn't we just use this one? It's, again, an instance where I feel like, I get it that everybody's busy, but there needs to be then better allocation of resources for the number of people we have working to figure out, okay, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, let's go steal what other cities have done, and where we need to do the work, we just need to do the work.
So, what I offer, if you look at the proposal there, there is extreme value with
this consultant. I've used this consultant in San Jose.
And I'm not saying that the consultant might be able to help in some aspects, but what you're basically asking the consultant to do is everything, and that's just not reasonable.
And have you told?
And, and I appreciate Bob, because it's on your desk, that, and I'm not sure how that happened. I saw the list that you put together, you've done most of the work for Public Works. You've gone through street scapes and public right-of-way and all those things, and made a list of where we're not compliant, but the other departments need to do that too. I mean, $60,000, we could buy a text telephone, we could do something that would actually help somebody with a disability be able to participate in the city, as opposed to generating a report that, again, it's 30 pages of boilerplate, what the law is, what the definitions are, all of this. And the rest of it is the real need, where the departments need to sit down and figure, what am I doing to help people who have disabilities participate in the programs or services I provide? And there's a form that helps them go through and figure out how to do that.
And I would like if that, that document that you have, if Bob has or has not seen that, that looked pretty intense, Denise.
Bob completed it.
That's what you, so.
That's the. That is for a piece of our city. There is like.
Right.
Five areas, and this completes everything, comes into every building, checks every building, all the way to the soap dispensers on the wall, to every bathroom, and then takes that, puts it in a database, and then you can look and say, "We're deficient in this building in these 15 places," and then you can take that and then program that in a capital improvement program over 20 years, and then you can say, "It'll be exactly this much money to be compliant." That's defensible. Just having a plan that says, "Here we are, we, and this is a list of things to do, we don't know how we're gonna get through it, it's not identified by an expert, this is, you know, I've gotta be out there and train my staff to go out there and take a level and say, 'Here's what you're looking at.'" So, these are people that do this every day, and they have done it for, if you look at their background, this is their expertise. And they're, what that does is it, just like right now, there's somebody that's coming at us, and the next, there'll be somebody else, and we can say, "Yes, but we've programmed X dollars in 2020, X dollars for 2021, and this is how we're gonna go through it." I'd rather be that case, hand that to the city attorney to be able to be defensible, than say, "Here is the minimum requirement met."
And all I can say is, without getting into closed-session material, we've been, we've been trying to get this reports, these reports done in the face of this litigation, and staff has just been completely overwhelmed. And so, it's been our advice to go out and hire a consultant to get the job done, because it's just, it's just, we have too many projects right now that are not allowing us to complete this report.
Yes.
My concern with this proposal, it is a fixed-price proposal, it's not a cost-plus. So, if we sign this, we're gonna have a bill of.
Thirty and thirty.
Yeah, sixty, uh, fifty-seven thousand. If they go out there and they don't find this stuff, we're still gonna be paying $57,000. I'd like to see the costs associated with the tasks, and what the budget's getting paid, and some time and material billing, as opposed to, you know, hey, we'll give you $57,000. We not, might not need $57,000.
It says, it said not to exceed.
It says on the top here, fee schedule and cost proposal.
Yeah, so we can.
There's no fee schedule.
We can focus on, the cost is on page.
Fifteen.
Um, let's see.
Fifteen, he just said.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. And so, we have facilities and parks at 37.5, and then the public right-of-way, that's what I'm saying, that I think that I can get that knocked down, just by making sure that we're getting the right linear measurement. I can ask them to come back and give us a different type of fee structure. I'm saying, this is a very, very qualified consultant, and you look at, they gave a few samples of their product here on other cities and counties, but they can just, they can give you just reams of paper showing you what they've done, and how good they are at this.
I'm just saying that if it can move in, it's not as bad as it turns out to be.
Yeah.
This agreement says we're gonna pay the $57,000. If we can get one, this is a time and material, with the costs paid out, that's new to live
The animal shelter has to be ADA accessible.
What all the, what ADA cameras are on that?
I'm sorry.
Wherever the public can access.
I know, I know. Tunica Club and Yacht Club, we should pay for that?
You know, there's all kinds of exemptions for historical, I mean, for.
At least the Tunica.
Yeah, they're safe harbors, so really, this started in 1992. They're safe harbors, but we still, anytime we go out and touch something with a new project.
Right.
Or if some developer comes in and they touch it, we need to know exact, and that's why you go and blanket the whole community, you say, "We know these areas are noncompliant." You come in with a project, we're saying, "You're gonna replace that sidewalk, you're gonna put a ramp in here." I, when we.
You already did that. I mean, you already did all the streets and sidewalks, because I saw the list.
I did what was brought to us that I need, needed to do. I needed to address certain roads. I didn't do everything. Everything, I mean, there was just a certain area of town that I had.
That list was from the plaintiff's law firm.
No, this had completion dates and.
No, that, that was, that was, the disagreeing law putting it in there.
We got the list, and then he worked on filling it out.
So, I had to go out and verify whether that's truth, or at least I had to say that we'd prove it, if nothing else, we'd comply as we're doing certain projects, okay? Not saying they're right or wrong, but, I mean, it was very global.
I didn't understand what the draw can be on.
And there is, there is a point, or a question, is there not a point where, for example, Tremontal, let's say, you kind of come up with all kinds of issues, but the amount of money it would take to make that totally accessible, there's a point where, I'm sorry, there's, that's, you just don't do it? You just, or you just, you know what I mean, or.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you try to make the things compliant, there are certain safe harbors that we do, but, you know, if there's a massive project, you're gonna go in there and gut it out and redo it. You're gonna be required to at least make that to the best of your ability accessible.
I know, so.
No, you're just talking about, we're not doing any work, it just is what it is.
Yeah, and so that's an example of an historic building, and then, but they, they do have different guidance for historic buildings, how you can move through an historic building and still keep those features. Say, I had a Victorian home, I've had those in other areas, I've worked, and all of a sudden, I'm putting a lift outside that, that's in the back.
Right.
And it kind of blends in with it, but now, you, you just had stairways back then, but now I have a lift, so I can get somebody into an historic home that is maybe a museum now. And so, that's how they satisfy those conditions.
Right. As we grow, though, and learn from this, I mean, and you know, is it possible going, I mean, once we do this, we have the plan, but then can we start training someone inside?
Yes.
And how's to take care of it after that?
One of the things, they can train our staff to do this, that's an option. I don't see where we have the staff to do that right now, to get this done. But, they can train them. Also, what they give us is the database, and that database is no cost for three years. And then after that, if you're still staying on that database, or you're keeping it active, and you're updating it, it's, it's a license fee of $2,000. So, we make that decision at that point, whether we keep that database up with them, but it's, you know, basically in the cloud, and it's, it's one of those things that, if you have somebody, if you have somebody claiming that they don't have a facility that's ADA-compliant, you go right to the database, you should, you should know. And as you do improvements, you update that.
Right.
And it comes off the list, and then you can, if you get somebody claiming that you're not, here's how much effort we've put in, here's our projects, here's where we were, here's where we are now.
Right.
We've made growth. I mean, that's defensible.
Right, but if you don't have somebody following through on the plan, then we're screwed.
Yes, yes. It's all part of your capital plan, it's, what you don't want it to do is have some type of lawsuit that overtakes your capital, and basically says, "You will do this for the next five years, because, you know, you have a civil rights issue."
Right, right.
And there have been cities that have had that happen to them, and so, we wanna control our own destiny by trying to get grant funds and make these ADA-compliant improvements with those projects, so that we can show progress.
Right, okay. Comments from the community? Counsel, with your pleasure.
Ollie, do you wanna, oh, please.
Do you need to come up there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor, council members, my name's Ron McIl, I live at 319 Whitley, and I'm sure all of this is hugely necessary. All I'm here to find out is why I can't get a handicap parking spot on my street. If it's a matter of money, I'll buy the paint, I'll paint it myself. It's been six months since I applied, well, actually, it's been six months since you rejected my application for a parking spot. I can't wait another five years.
Right.
Just paint the spot. There isn't one handicap parking spot in the entire street of Whitley. It's what, five, six blocks, maybe 10, if you go all the way to the top? Sometimes I have to walk a third of the way up the hill. If you don't get there by four, you don't get a parking spot. It's just that simple.
Mm-hmm.
I'd appreciate one. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for, yeah, that's not something that's done at the council level, but we can follow up.
With the changes I've suggested.[1788.13]
So it's still a not-to-exceed amount, if we're doing time and material, or if you're just restructuring that?
Yeah, it's a T and M thing, so we know that this task should take X amount of hours, and this task today, X amount of hours, and that sort, we can look at and make sure it passes the smell test. And right now, it's not passing the smell test.
It's the sniff test, not the smell.
Sniff smell.
I understand.
Okay, is that, is that acceptable, if we do that?
Yeah, that's doable, that's doable, yes.
Okay? So you're going to...
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, to direct the city manager to execute with a change?
Yes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Comments, call for the vote. Thank you, Bob.
Sit down, Bob, for one thing.
Four eyes.
Oh, gosh, you still...
When no helpers.
Okay, Pam, thank you. Miranda Cook. Guided number 17, ordinance, amending and repealing, and repealing and amending.
This is what we already talked about.
Yes.
Just bringing it back.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is one of the statutes that we needed to change, that we discussed during our joint meeting. State law has changed regarding how density bonuses can be approved, and the conditions and regulations that cities can implement to meet the state statutes. So, Planning Commission adopted this, adopted a resolution recommending that the city council adopt this ordinance. It basically repeals our current density bonus regulations and imposes the state statutes. It repeals the section of the code that said our density bonus units could be market-rate housing, which is in opposition of what state law requires. State law requires that density bonus units be affordable housing. So, we're recommending that you adopt the ordinance, it just, like I said, it implements the state code, it does overlay a requirement that the density bonus units cannot be transient housing. So they cannot be a short-term rental unit for density bonus units. We will be coming back for the specific guidelines on how the application and everything would process, but Elizabeth Hulse and our, per our discussions that night, we took out all of the references to the whole code section out of it, and it now just refers to the state laws for density bonus.
And it provides that when we develop these specifics, it's done by resolution, so you don't need, they go into effect immediately, rather than two readings and 30 days later. That was your request as well.
And this, was this the one where we also had the discussion about the length of time, and we didn't want the 30 days, we, because it said no less than 30 days, but that? Or was that an inclusionary? What was that? We talked about...
No, that was on this one where, no, that was accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling, okay, thanks.
Although theoretically, the same argument, it would apply.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And what was the resolution? I thought that we were going to check to see whether, from a legal standpoint, if there was some issue with the state law making it more than a 30-day rental? Isn't that what our discussion was?
I don't recall that part.
I remember Annie's just...
Because that one said, no less than 30 days.
And that's what this says.
No less than.
Oh, oh, did, oh.
So this prohibits transient occupancy?
Right.
Okay.
And our discussion was, we're really more concerned about more than just transient occupancy.
Right.
We really want it to be used for...
Year-round housing.
Year-round housing.
Right. And I don't know if we changed it on that other one yet, or is that's coming back to us? So I think we need to do likewise on the...
The affordability takes place there. So there's got to be affordability criteria.
I could be a poor visitor.
A millionaire.
I think there's language...
Density bonus doesn't have affordability, does it?
Okay.
Under state law?
I believe, my recollection, Elizabeth Hulse, the expert, is that the state law's changed, and it does now...
And it does have affordability.
That'll be like the, you know, the 55-year, the lovely 55-year, it has to be affordable for 55 years.
Well, I think if you...
But we can, I can check that, and we can put that information in the staff report when we do the second reading.
Okay, okay.
So whether or not the state allows some leeway on the term of housing, the term of rental.
And the 30 days.
30 days is in there, right now.
I know, but we don't want that. That's why they didn't want on the other one either, because you could rent it for 31 days. And then they leave, and then somebody comes for 31 days. So, if, we talked about it now, my mind is maybe a little clearer, we talked about to be a resident of Avalon, you have to be here six months. So why wouldn't you have, they'd at least have to rent it for six months?
I think she didn't.
Or something.
Okay.
Kind of remember this?
I remember you stating the six months, but I don't remember.
Yeah, but I don't know if we, we didn't actually move on it, but, but, something that, much better than that. And I don't, do you all remember?
I, I remember the conversation, I don't remember the actual agreement.
Right.
But I do remember the conversation of it being more, because again, you could do that.
So moving forward, what do y'all think?
The goal was for them to not be used for vacation rentals.
Right. But there's some people that go, oh, man, I could spend my winter in Catalina, you know, December and January, and, you know, and...
Did it qualify for affordability?
They didn't have to qualify for the affordable housing. So, okay, but we'll, so we'll double check the time frame, and we'll bring it back.
So do we motion on this tonight, or do we hold it for the next reading?
I have a motion.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay.
Subject to the input from the city attorney, I'd like to move to introduce in the way of all further reading of ordinance, amending section 9-11.103 of the Avalon municipal code, repealing and amending section 9-11 dot 105, and repealing and amending sections 9-11 dot 107, to provide reasonable regulations to develop density bonus units.
Okay, and I, a question again. What does affordability and more than 30 days have, have in common? I mean, you're saying that if it's affordability issue...
No, it is to, if you get a density bonus unit, the people that live there are going to have to qualify under California law for affordable housing.
Right.
And then the issue is, does state law say, by this, we're prohibiting, we are prohibiting short-term rentals? Transient rentals. The question is, does state law have a minimum requirement? And what we can do is, if, if it's the council's direction to include in the ordinance at least a minimum of six months, what we can do is, we can come back at the next time, and it would be an initial first reading, or, we can come back with draft regulations that go into effect immediately, that say, six months.
Well, don't lose, lose sight of it then, okay? I, I'm willing to do that, but just don't lose sight of it in a couple of months and go, oh, yeah, because affordable, if I'm an affordable unit, what's the rent going to be? Could be eight or nine, six, $700 a month, right? And there are people that make 12, $900 a month, getting SSI, which is low income, that would qualify. So, again, I want to make sure that then those people, it would, you know what I'm trying to say.
I think the affordability issue is separate than the term issue.
Correct.
Well, I know, and what I'm saying is, you can have people that are, that can, that are low-income, affordable, that might only want to stay for two months on a vacation and go. And I'm trying to say that maybe they need to be tied in together, just because somebody seems to be getting low-income housing, doesn't mean they can't take a two-month vacation.
And that's just something we need to look into. The state law may say it needs to be their primary residence, it may...
Okay, well, then that isn't...
So that's something we need to look at.
Exactly, exactly. I'm sorry, I don't mean to beat that, but, I'm not always clear.
Motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Comments? Call for the vote.
Ole.
Bob, Nick.
Oh, it's Bob again.
It's Bob, the Bob show.
I'm curious, the contingency that's in the back of the room, faces I don't usually see, so welcome.
Okay, so, this East Whitley concept plans, 206 East Whitley, so that's the fourplex that the city owns that is intended for low-mod housing. So, this item is a continuing discussion on the concept remodel plans for the city's fourplex on East Whitley. Last council meeting, you directed me to scale back the concepts that I had presented. The concept you have now is a scaled-back option two, because you had option one and option two. And the option one was the one where we were re, we were increasing and remodeling the front entry beyond just doing the stairway. And so, option two really keeps the building as, the outside of the building as, pretty much as it is, but redo, redoes the stairway, removes and replaces the front stairway. And the reason that the stairway needs to come off in the front, it's rotten, the deck is rotten, so that needs to be done. And the same with the back decks, they're rotten, and the rails are not up to standard. So, all of that stuff has to come off on the outside. And then also, the outside concrete is in bad shape, so we would go make that as ADA compliant and safe as possible. So, all of that needs to, is part of the scope that's in that option two. And, but, we also scaled back the materials that we're going to put here. So, we're trying to use the most economical, standardized materials as we're putting these estimates together. So, this is go through again, what this looks like. So this is the elevation of the front with that one stairway, and you see what the scope is here, is there's going to be new doors in the front, so we, instead of rehanging and putting new jams in here, we would rehang doors, new front doors in there, so that we could get new doors, new hardware, so that they would take care of some of the deficiencies on that. Of course, there's going to be new windows all the way throughout, and then the, you have the new front stairway, which is only on one side. Why would we have two sets of stairs to maintain when we can do that with one set of stairs? Okay, and so, that's what you see in, in this elevation on the front. This is the demo plan, so the red dashed lines is what we're demolishing, and then the black is what's remaining of that. So that kind of gives you an indication of what's there, and what we're tearing out, and then we would have something to build upon, and that's what this plan is, is really, that's the option two plan here, where you're getting on the two-bedroom, you know, on the, you have the first floor on the left, and the second floor on the right. You can see everything's pretty well mirrored from first floor to second floor, but you're getting two bedrooms in that right-hand side, and even, I know that we had some comments, and this hasn't been changed, that that second bedroom was kind of small. We can put that wall on a skew there, too, to increase that, instead of putting it in the hallway. Those are design elements I can work on as we finalize the plan. I'm just really looking at, not in the weeds, at the concept level, are we still on the right track? But the kitchen gets redone, the bathrooms get redone, so all of those maintenance issues you would see with older cabinets, with older plumbing and all that, you'll see that in those areas, we really rework it. And in the bedrooms, what we're doing is making sure that, that we have good closets, good, good place for storage, windows are being replaced, and finished carpentry is being updated, all lighting, so all your plugs and all that would be new. The wiring would stay in, but, you know, you'd get brand-new receptacles, you'd get brand-new light fixtures, all those kind of things that would cause you maintenance issues, or would be substandard. And, so, and then the HVAC, I know there was a question on whether we were too robust, and checking on that, I think we scaled down that, but we still can go with units that are not just wall furnaces. We get something that's a little more state-of-the-art and energy-efficient. So, that's what a lot of these elements are, the doors, the windows, anywhere we can put some insulation, anywhere we can do something with the lights to bring that up to the most current standard, to make it energy-efficient. And then, really, just those elements like cabinets and plumbing fixtures and all those things, those are just a cut-down on our maintenance. It's good for whoever's living there, they're getting a nice, clean, habitable space, but they're also, far as our maintenance, these are pretty well-done and delivered, and we're not going to see a whole lot of cost in maintenance for a while.
Right.
Okay, and so, then what you see is the rear of the building, and again, we're removing the windows, replacing those, and to save on some of the costs, too, what we'll do is do retrofit windows. So what we do, instead of tearing out everything and going all the way, tearing out the stucco, we can put windows inside the windows, and they got retrofit models to do that. And so that, that saves us some of the costs, and so that we get, you know, we're ready to paint right after that. And then you can see the decks that we're removing, so you notice the size of the deck, the decks here, and so this is the remove and the replace in the base bid with the decks. And so I still have kept that element in, and what I've done is put in an add alternate, and expands the rear decks. And the reason I'm saying this is, look at this, okay? Now, that's what size of the decks. Now I'm talking about using all of that space in that rear yard, which has a great view, and now I'm using that square footage, it was highest and best used, and tripling it, okay? So imagine that I keep that same deck size, and I have that area in the back, it's not going to be used, now I put it out the back, and every one of those units get use of that square footage, that's real estate. The ground level, the first level, and the second level.
Right.
Okay, so now I've multiplied the highest and best use of that real estate times three. So that's why I'm saying it's something that we need to consider the value of that. There's some costs that I've already put in there to tear off the deck, do the window, so I've got that incremental add alternate of 2,000 per unit, I'm estimating to increase that deck size. Okay, and so, that shows you with what it would look like with the decks on there. And basically what that is, is something with the composite decking, and then you would have cable railing, you know, on the rails there like we do, and it's low maintenance, it's basically pipe rails with cables in it, and, so, but that brings that all up to standard. And the decks have to come off anyway, okay? So what are we going to do with those? Are we just replace them, or do we see what that incremental difference? You can make that decision after we're getting ready to award the project. That's what the add alternate does for us. And you can see that the consultant already has it laid out, so it's really not, at this point, an additional cost to get that figured out. This is the laundry room, that's that bottom level, and you can see that, per your direction, we've kept the laundry room in, but there's also storage ability in there, so that, one of the things here on the island, it's tough for people, is they don't have the ability to store things. That room to the left there would be our maintenance room, to make sure that we have all our equipment, supplies, we would not be hauling any equipment there to be able to do this maintenance, it would be all there readily available to us. And let's see, but, the one thing that I did include in this still was, and we had a high number on that before, you could see that the compact washer and dryer areas are still there, okay? And what the intent is, is that's really a closet, but we're plumbing that while we're there, we're already tearing it out. And so, if somebody had a washer and dryer, they had a family, they had kids, they don't want to go down to that lower unit to do their laundry, they've already, there's someplace there for them. If not, that's a closet, and that's storage for them, okay? Since we're getting that way, all the way down to the studs in that area right there, it seemed like it was, it had some value to that.
Right, gosh. All right.
Significantly better.
And then, this is the estimate, okay? So, from what I was saying before, we're starting to approach 400,000. The base bid here is just shy of 200,000. And then the base bid with that add alternate is 207,100. So, it's coming, you know, we allocated 300,000 total here, so you can see that we're heading toward that, and we need to contain those costs. You know, after, I need, by the time I come to you next time, and we look at what the rents are, what they predict the rents are, I can say what the payoff for these improvements are, but I would think it would be somewhere south of three years.
We're not in the real estate business.
No, but I'm just, I know it's still, we're always...
People are providing housing for people.
Yeah, I'm just always talking business terms.
Right, I know, I appreciate that. And that's what the consultants always say, too, but I, that's just not how I see it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I guess it's a test of value.
I know, you're, that's how you look at it, I get it.
Appreciate that, but, yeah.
Okay, so, comments?
Bob, all the utilities individually metered?
Yes, they're already individually metered right now, they're separate, gas, and they're separate, there's actually even a separate utility meter for the laundry room.
So water and gas electric, separate?
Water, gas, yeah, I think there is, I would have to check on the water.
There were four meters in the back.
But I know, I know the meter, I know the electric and gas is separate right now. So we can see what we need to do.
Yeah, we definitely want seven meters.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there are four meters showing in the back of the plans, but it doesn't say specifically what the meters are.
And then one of your, of them, you're gonna trick out more to be handicap accessible?
Yes.
One, yeah.
So, Jeffrey Hernandez reports, there's one water meter right now.
Oh, one water?
One.
Okay, so we can see what we can do about that. Because it's gonna be still the same usage.
Right, right, right.
As what's been allocated there.
Well, I think you've done really well. I just have to say, though, I went over there this afternoon, and I really encourage all the city council people to do that, because I actually think it was Amanda and I that brought this to, the city manager, and recommended that the city purchase this property, because I used to take meals and wheels to the gentleman that owned it. And he was scrupulous about taking care of this property. And there is nothing wrong with those bathrooms. There's, I mean, I, I don't even buy that there's, that the plumbing is in question. They have new fixtures in the showers, they're all caulked, there's, I'm not, I don't understand why we would wanna replace these. I know your argument is, it's older plumbing, but just looking at it, I would say, replace the plumbing then, but why you're gonna tear out?
Jeffrey public works, I've been dealing with that building since pastor gave me the green light to fix it for temporary personnel. Each building has its own character, it looks good. It, I, it's deceiving, because every single toilet, every single drainage, I've had to snake them. Plumbing is leaking, I've done temporary repairs. So, it looks nice, but I've had to make repairs on every single building. When Dennis H. occupied one, I was there every week, called on the weekends.
And I, obviously, I'm not a plumber, so what you're saying is, that when plumbing is bad, you tear everything out and replace everything, or is that just, it's more economical?
Your plumbing runs through these walls. So, I've had to repair upstairs, plumbing, rip downstairs through the walls, to be able to address a section of plumbing that was cracked, that was damaged, and it was never exposed.
Okay.
So the plumbing is there. If you're exposing the plumbing, you're gonna repair the water lines as well.
Mine is, yeah, I agree.
You have old steel pipes that are running as water lines. They're not even copper. So, the condition is, you're gonna rip walls no matter what. If you have people there, it just becomes more of a hard time.
So the plan is, you're just, you've, you've determined that all plumbing all needs to be replaced?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
The plumbing, the water lines, it's a major issue.
Because when you look at it, I mean, you can understand, you look at it, it looks-
Oh, yeah. To me, it's like, oh, it's a perfect place. But when you start looking at detail, everything is within the walls, it has a lot of issues.
Okay.
And since day one, when they said, "But you gotta move home, my house," what's the issue now? And sewage, water lines?
No, and obviously, don't, we don't wanna have-
Correct. So it's, there's always an issue with what's currently there. It looks beautiful. It has, each room, each property has character, but there's gonna be issues that are gonna be brought up every week, no matter what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was just the, my take.
And one of the things that we were trying to deliver, when we delivered this project and finally put people in there, was there was gonna be reduced maintenance right from the start, you know, for a while here, and that we would have a very habitable place that somebody wanted to live, and it'd be reduced maintenance, and it would be, I mean, what we're doing is, we're trying to show the community, this is the way it should be done, okay? And we're not trying to go over the top.
I asked, no, as I said, I totally, I really appreciate the, the way that you've come back with this.
Right, it's great.
Yeah.
Proceed.
I, I would like to see us proceed based on this phase two proposal that you, or this second, what are you, what are your, I'm looking at your notes, what is your official?
Option two.
Option two. But just given the mobilization of construction that's already gonna be happening, I would like for us to consider the base bid with the add alternate, which is quite a bit less expensive than if we were to decide to come back later and do, do those. So, if the-
I'm sorry?
To do the add option, the add alternative?
Yes.
To do the full decks in the back?
Right, yes.
Is it significantly less expensive to do it right now?
Yes, I agree.
I was gonna make one further suggestion. I think we should demo the cottage, while you've got people there.
And, yes, we wanna demo the cottage, but it really, it comes down to how many units. Remember when we reduce a unit, we need to get a unit somewhere else. So we need to at least have a plan for that. And I was trying to focus on this construction. If we add a demo, when the contractor comes, I can get a change order amount and say, "How much is that?" If not, I can get our own crews and say-
No, you're right, we'd have replacement obligations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the last question is, is there a way to move that fountain to City Hall here?
Um, I think, you know, there's anything possible, but-
Well, no, but I mean, you know, realistically, without damaging it, I really would like-
You should really, I think you should really talk to the island company, see what it costs them to remove and redo those tiles. To hire a professional that can do that, I mean, it's, I think it's gonna be crazy, because I just think it's a great little waiting pool, and that's where we could just take all the kids, right? Until we get our splash pad.
Oh, my gosh, that could be the pool.
And that could be a future item.
Beautiful. Yeah. Good job!
So is our direction, do we need a motion to accept option two and move direct staff to move forward?
That sounds like a motion.
Yeah, so, a motion, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
For the, all of, favor say aye.
For the second?
Yeah. It was Pam and Cindy.
Bob, don't sit down, we have another surprise item for you. I'm kidding.
Well, and then, we can talk about the little casita over there, since we've saved so much money, and fix that up.
And we're doing the hospitals?
Hospitals?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Hospital. Have you been with counseling?
No, we have one more closed session, hold over.
Right, so we're gonna go into the hospital, and then we'll go back.
I'd like to call, order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, December 18th at five o'clock. We're a little late, but, oh, well. Do we have a roll call?
Trustee Albers?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here.
Do we have any announcements, ma'am?
We have none.
We have none? Oh, good. We have written communication?
None.
Oh, good. We have any presentations? None. Oral communications, this is time for the members of the public may address the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees at this time. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item at this meeting. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Flocking to the podium. Actually, no one's flocking. Consent calendar?
We have two items on the-
Can trustees ask questions, or is there, I mean, is there some portion here? Just, I had a question, I noted that in the report, Carol Reynolds has submitted a freshwater allocation for the proposed new hospital, and I'm just wondering if that was done on a square-foot basis?
They have a conceptual plan that they've been working with. It's not any sort of finalization by any means, but it's a, an idea that they used in order to-
Get on the list.
To get on the list. Because, of course, nothing can happen. They haven't, they hadn't been on the allocation list, and there's a lot of continuing conversation that will happen, whether or not there would be any credit from the current building, what the, you know, what would happen with the current building that they're in. There's just so much more discussion, but instead of waiting for that moment, they went ahead and put themselves on the list.
And that is a council discussion?
Correct. Oh, yes, 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 no. There, there's just, it's so preliminary at this point, that getting on the list was critical.
Yeah.
And I would just generally observe that the finances seem to be pretty stable, and the only thing that was interesting to have noticed, that they're gonna get a new CAT scan, which is great, a scan machine.
It's just discouraging about the, this whole THIPA contract, and, you know, a conversation for another time outside of tonight, but at what point do we just decide to do whatever we have to do in our community, so that the health care that we provide in this community can be received by our medical center? You look like you wanna say something.
We've consulted legal counsel, who's an expert in this, the hospital is, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's just, it's very frustrating, because the hospital's providing the services, and, you know, like it or not, conflicts of personalities, or whatever the case is between THIPA and the medical center, you know, it's just, enough is enough.